Go ahead and start the debate. The Hermosa Beach Neighborhood Association debate, we've been doing this debate since 2006, and this is a 2019 debate, and we have three city councils members, or three city council candidates, as you see, and what we'll do first is I'll leave everybody in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so this is going out on video, just like a city council meeting, and it'll be replayed like a city council meeting, and also we have two other debates coming up. On October 7th, there is a women's club debate that will be in the city council chambers at 7:00, and October 16th, a debate with the leadership of Hermosa will be leading that debate, moderating it, and that is October 16th, 7 o'clock, right in the city council chambers, just like this. And first thing I'll do is introduce our candidates, Trent Larson, Justin Massey, and Michael DeToye. And what we'll do first is I'll start the debate, and I'll explain some of the protocols. The first thing we're gonna do is opening statements, and Trent here is in position number one, so he'll give the opening statement first, then Justin, then Mike, and at the end of the meeting, the last thing that they're gonna be commenting on, it will be a closing statement, and Michael DeToye will be taking the closing statement first, Justin, and then Trent, so they don't have to start the same thing. And then once the opening statements are finished, there's gonna be a ballot measure H debate, and Justin Massey will be taking that first, and then it'll go to Michael DeToye, and then Trent. And then on the first debate question, Michael DeToye will take it. As each question moves forward, you don't have the same candidate has to answer first, it'll kind of rotate, but everybody will be answering the question. Okay, we'll start the debate with position one, Trent Larson, and Trent, can you give us your opening statement?
Well, hello, and thank you, in the audience, for showing up here tonight, and thank you for those who are watching on television. And Al, thank you for your hard work, and all of that you put into this forum, it's a valuable service to our community and to the voters. For five consecutive years, I have been participating in Hermosa Beach politics, and that has prepared me for the five-year council term that is up for vote on November 5th. Five years of active involvement has provided me with the educational insight and complexities required to hit the ground running once I am sworn in to office. Background and understanding of the issues are critically important, so much so that one current council member recently remarked how much there is to learn and digest when being a new city council member. It takes careful study, time, effort, and energy when making independent, informed decisions on matters that come before council. My head, my heart, and my guts are immersed and enmeshed into the fabric of the community. Current and informed is right in my wheelhouse. The five years I have spent learning will now pay dividends as a city council member. Hermosa Beach City Council requires a genuine taxpayers' advocate who will focus his efforts on visible, usable improvements that produce betterment for the residents and guests of Hermosa Beach. Primary goals include street and sewer repair, public park restoration, improved public safety, and being business-friendly. Tax dollars working to improve the lives of the living by upgrading city cleanliness, enhancing the green belt, opening North School, revitalizing Clark Field, refurbishing the Clark Building, rebuilding the firehouse, resurfacing damaged streets, and relieving homeless persons from homelessness in Hermosa Beach. Councilmember Trent will constructively collaborate with city leaders to enable responsible and deliverable solutions be implemented quickly, protecting our Hermosa Beach small-town charm with enhanced public space beautification, vigorous defense of local zoning control, and supporting local businesses while also attracting new businesses. I moved here with my family to Hermosa Beach in 2003 with my wife Ann and daughter Taylor. Key accomplishments for consideration include my tenure within Los Angeles, successfully conducting business enterprise-level sales from 1989 to current date right now.
Summarize.
Hermosa Beach City Council candidate, November 5th, in November 2015, '16, '17, and now '19. I was been an AYSO soccer head coach, 2014 to 2017, spring and fall seasons, and Hermosa Beach youth basketball coach, and the budget and finance commissioner for City Redondo, and I would appreciate your support, and you'll be glad you did. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
Thank you, Al, thank you to the Neighborhood Association, thank you to everyone for being here and for watching on TV. If you don't know me, that means you haven't needed a city council meeting to put yourself to sleep at night, so you can count that as a good thing. I am one of your city council members, my name is Justin Massey, as you've heard. Many of you might know my wife Jen, my daughters Shane and Cody, they are up at View School or at preschool or around town. My wife Jen and I grew up in Southern California, we met here in 2009, we chose to raise our family here. We care about Hermosa for our family and yours. Working together over the past four years, we've accomplished a great deal. We protected the community, we protected you and your family. We permanently eliminated E&amp;B's oil drilling rights. After Measure O, E&amp;B asked for an additional $15 million from the city, claiming the election was not a fair election, and we got them in return for paying them an additional $1.5 million to relinquish all of their drilling rights, their lease to the city yard, their state lands commission permit, the mineral rights they had negotiated. So anybody else who comes to Hermosa Beach seeking to drill for oil starts at square one, like McPherson did 40 years ago. We brought in LA County Fire, and they've been terrific, they've shortened our response times, they've closed coverage gaps by making sure that we have a truck in our station at all times, and they've improved our disaster preparedness because in an emergency like an earthquake, county firefighters report to the nearest county fire station, and we have a lot of county firefighters who live in the beach cities, so we will have a lot of firefighters on scene when disaster strikes. We improved the police department's capabilities, we fully staffed patrols, which enabled the police department to create a dedicated downtown unit, which was one of the recommendations that came out of a study of our police department. That continuity has allowed us to focus on safety in our downtown. We also reopened the downtown substation to give our police department the tools that they need to focus on making downtown safer, because in order for us to have a good business environment, everybody who comes to Hermosa Beach needs to get home safely, that is our primary goal. As the chief said, it's a completely different atmosphere downtown than it was five or 10 years ago as a result of the work that we've done to not only improve our police department's capabilities, but cleanliness and lighting downtown. We protected your tax dollars by balancing the budget, filling the rainy day fund, increasing fire and police funding to provide the level of service we do today, and by reducing pension costs, by setting aside money over and above what CalPERS requires us to pay in an interest-bearing trust account so that in the future, when CalPERS comes to us for a bigger contribution, we will have money set aside to be able to pay that.
Summarize.
And we kept our employee healthcare costs. We improved quality of life by finishing South Park, building the 8th Street safer out to school, putting a new roof, a new exterior, and solar power on the community center. We supported Measure S, and working with the district, North School is about to break ground, and we're now rebuilding the fire station to provide permanent quarters for our firefighters. We have delivered the core services that you expect of us, that's why I'm running for reelection. I ask you for your vote so that we can keep moving Hermosa forward.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Thank you, thank you to Mr. Benson for hosting and organizing this debate tonight. Thank you to the audience for being here and watching at home, and thank you to councilmember Massey and Mr. Larson for running positive campaigns. When I first learned that my great-grandfather had been the president of Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce and worked on various nonprofits, I was inspired by his example to be a service to his community. That's why I became a firefighter, why I served on the Hermosa Beach Emergency Preparedness Commission, and why I'm seeking to serve on your city council. I moved to Hermosa Beach nine years ago, I fell in love with the beach environment, and when I got married three years ago, my wife and I knew this is where we wanted to start our family. We now have a daughter who's 18 months old, and the experience of parenting has given me an even deeper appreciation of our city. With her, I now spend much more time in our parks and our libraries. While pushing her stroller around town, I notice the conditions of our sidewalks and the safety of our streets. I see how our city infrastructure impacts the quality of life and determines our level of public safety. I know how much families with young children and seniors both depend on our city resources, and I want to make sure our city council meets the needs of all of our residents. On the professional front, I'm a firefighter for the city of Riverside. I have a long commute to work, but every time I return home, I'm reminded how much and how lucky I am to live in Hermosa Beach. In my work, I see how city planning and emergency preparedness can save lives. I want to use my expertise as a public safety professional to guarantee that our city council factors in public safety to each one of its decisions. I have a bachelor's degree in finance and a master's degree in public administration. I'm a fiduciary trustee for the Southern California Firefighters Benefits Trust, the trust has $40 million of assets under management. It's about the same size as the budget of Hermosa Beach. If elected, I'll use my education experience to strengthen the city's fiscal profile. I've shared with you what motivates me to run for city council and why I believe I'm prepared to focus on the most important issues facing the city today. I look forward to discussing more topics tonight and listening to your biggest concerns moving forward. I hope to earn your vote, and so I can be your voice in the Hermosa Beach City Council. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, the next thing up is a ballot measure H debate, and I'll mention this a couple times during the debate. If you go to this website, which is hbneighborhood.org, the audience can see right here, hbneighborhood.org, right at the top of that webpage, it says 2019 debate questions. So every question and all the background information that the city council candidates got is right there when you click on that. So, okay, we will go to ballot measure H. I'll do a little background on it, and then we'll have the candidates debate, and oh, by the way, they had two minutes for their opening statement and closing statement, and for the questions in this ballot measure, it'll be one minute. So ballot measure H is the consideration and adjusting of the city's transit occupancy tax rate, also known as the hotel tax, or when I was young, it would be called the bed tax or something. So way back when, if you paid $100 for a hotel room, right now in Hermosa Beach, that $100 would be taxed at 12%, so $12. And what they're talking about is raising it from 12 to 14, so for every $100, it would go from $12 to $14, so increased by $2 for every 100 that you pay for the room. And what, one of the advantages that the city talks about with this type of tax is this tax goes directly to the city. So this means that, like, when we have a sales tax and you pay around 10% on your food, 9% of that goes to the state, and we never see it. So we get about 1% on sales tax. This, we get 100% of the revenue, and a 2% increase, according to the city, would generate an estimated additional $550,000. And then, of course, every time a new hotel is built, and we've got a couple of hotels, one that's close to opening and another one that'd be a few years from opening, of course, every time they add more hotel rooms, then the hotel tax is paid for every night that they stay. So, okay, we'll go to the measure H ballot debate in around one minute for the candidates, and you may see that I, when I get a little bit around a minute or so, I'll tell them to summarize, but I want them to finish their statements. So just because I say the word summarize doesn't mean they have to stop. Okay, so the next up would be Justin, ballot measure H.
Thank you, Al. So the question is framed, is it a good idea or a bad idea? It's a good idea. I, along with the unanimous council, are the signatories to the ballot statement in favor of measure H. This puts us on par with Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, Inglewood, cities around the region who are charging a 14% rate for their bed tax. Measure H also had a prior iteration in 2015. The council then didn't vote to put it on the ballot, a group of citizens, including myself, went out and collected signatures to put it on the ballot, and it passed by 85% to 15%. Since then, we've seen no erosion in occupancy rates in our hotels, which remains at about 80%. The city's costs are rising for public works, for law enforcement, for all of the other services that we provide to residents and visitors alike. This is a way to help fund those services through our visitors, so it is a very good idea, and the money will be used to fund infrastructure and street repairs, park upgrades, and our police and fire services that we provide to residents and visitors alike. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Perfect. I'll agree with councilmember Massey, I am in full support of measure H, along with the city council. It's a non-residential tax, and it's a non-residential revenue, which are things that I think are really important of examining, making sure that we're not paying more, being a citizen of Hermosa Beach, and it's just visitors into this town. So it's only paid by the guests who stay and lodge in Hermosa Beach, and they're paying for their fare of services that they use, and also the wear and tear of our infrastructure. Initially, my concerns were, what are we in line with other cities? Manhattan Beach is currently at 12%, in 2022, they could go to 14%. Redondo Beach is currently at 12%, and the city of Los Angeles is 14%. So the cities around us, we're right in line with them, we're not going too extreme. My other big concern is, you know, then are we gonna be too dependent on the TOT? And right now, it only currently makes up about 8% of our revenue, so we're not, you know, this isn't a massive part of our revenue right now, that increase will only bump it up to about 9% of our overall revenue. So I'm in full support, again, we're not too dependent on it, but I think moving forward, non-residential revenue is definitely very important.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Well, I'm not hearing much about this around town, but my hunch is that it's going to pass because we do get all the revenue, and it's in par with the other cities around our area, but what I am concerned about is things like the Strand and Pier Hotel, which has been talked about for a long time, and where we're projecting a lot of our revenue to come from, and what is concerning is that that property has gone dark and not been moved on at all, and it's because they're lacking parking spaces. They're lacking, they're 70 spaces short, and they want for us to overlook that, and if we do, we're gonna have a real parking problem up and down Pier Avenue all over the place. Also, the hotel wants to take away the alley, beach alley, between the existing alley now, and I don't think that's necessarily a good idea, because they bought the property and they bought the alley, but the city has easement rights, and it's a big discussion. So I'm concerned that that alley is gonna get gobbled up by this hotel, and there's many, many residents in town that want to protect that alley, and in fact, there's people that have talked to me that are saying rally for the alley. And the Strand and Pier can be built, but it has to be built on the property that they bought and that they agreed to when they paid all that money.
Thanks, Trent. Okay, so we are gonna go to debate question one, and Mike will be answering that question. So basically, questions one and two are based on something called a policy agenda, and within this policy agenda, there's 12 action items. Some of them have been addressed, and some of them haven't been addressed, but basically, a lot of these fall into what's called the general plan. And the general plan is something that was just completed a couple of years ago, but it's the major document that the city looks forward into the future as far as what they're gonna be doing financially, city infrastructure, buildings, all that kind of stuff. So within these, this policy agenda of these 12 items, is the general plan, and, like I said, infrastructure and buildings. So my first question is, and that'll be for Mike, is from the Hermosa Beach Action Agenda, there are 12 targets for actions listed. Give us your list of priority projects or issues from the 12 targets that absolutely must go forward in 2020 and beyond. Why should these projects be addressed and completed? Mike?
Perfect. The nice thing about looking at these 12 targets for action is actually quite a few of them have been accomplished or they're in the works right now. So it's pretty neat to see that there has been progress made on the plan that we created, but my top three priorities moving forward are gonna be, the second one, which is gonna be financial policies, long-range plan. And it's not just to balance our budget, but to actually improve our bond rating, so that way we can borrow money for cheaper if we want to have any infrastructure projects moving forward. My second priority one is gonna be number nine, is meet and confer. This may not seem that important, but we need to ensure that we're making progress with our new contracts with our employee relation groups. Just this past week, we've lost two of our Hermosa Beach police officers to other agencies, and it's because they're leaving for better opportunity and better pay. We need to make sure that our police officers are fully hired, and that the new contract will help with recruitment and retention issues. And then the fourth one that is my third priority will be the city infrastructure master plans. Most of these master plans are completed, and they have been approved, but we also just can't make plans, we actually have to make sure that the projects get built. So just to follow through on those plans, making sure that, you know, our sewers get built, that according to the plan, that our sidewalks are kept up to par for accessibility issues and things like that. So those are my top three priorities. Thank you very much.
Trent?
Yes, my top priority is the city infrastructure, which is things that are visible and usable and add to the betterment of the lives of the living. Things like the sewers that we all pay taxes for if you're a property owner, that's been a slow roll to getting fixed. We have hardly done anything on that, and we need to do more. I want our streets repaved, I want a better, higher index across the city. I want our parks refurbished, I want the restrooms in the parks redone. I want our playing fields remade, and Clark Field fixed up, the green belt enhanced. Fort Lots of Fun School, up where Fort Lots of Fun is, that can be opened where we can have lots of parties and kids, for kids and things like that. Clark Building, the kitchen doesn't even work. That is an absolute shame that that kitchen does not work in the Clark Building. That's an historic building, and where that's a community gathers, and we could have lots of events in there, and we're not doing it, and it's because we're just sitting on our hands. Also, I want to, as part of infrastructure, fully fund the police department with their path improvements to people assisting the homeless. We really need to spend time, effort, and energy helping, relieving the homeless from homelessness in Hermosa Beach, so that we don't become something akin to Venice or Santa Monica, because it's coming our way, and we need to pay attention to that.
Summarize.
Yes, the city buildings, for example, we're now redoing the fire building because LA County took it over, and they're doing the smart thing. They're doing basically a simple remodel, and a refresh, and a refurb, which we could do here. We've kicked around the idea of tearing down buildings and putting up brand-new ones forever, it's super expensive, and nothing gets done. When we here could, for example, we could start with the library and give it a refresh, be similar, it'd be a small, powerful little library like the Millennium Falcon in Star Wars. It could be better. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
All right, thanks, Al. As Mike pointed out, almost all of these have actually been accomplished, I want to touch on a couple that Trent mentioned. The Clark Kitchen, that's fully funded, as is a remodel, it's before the Parks and Rec Commission to decide what they want that renovation to look like, so that's where it is in the process. With respect to the park restrooms, we funded new restrooms at Seaview Parquet in Fort Lots of Fun, and a new restroom at South Park, and renovation of the restrooms at Clark Field. That process is in the design phase, it's awaiting coastal commission approval. We adopted the general plan, we're awaiting coastal commission approval of our local coastal plan. Plan Hermosa sets carbon reduction targets aligned with state goals. We have accomplished all of our infrastructure master plans, so rather than just going out and repaving a street and then going back six months later to tear it up and fix the sewer, you need to finish those master plans, so your priority list reflects where you need to fix the sewers and storm drains before you go out and repave the street. It's cost-effective, and it's disruptive to neighborhoods if you don't do it the right way. That work has been done, we're about to start a major street and sewer repair project north of View School between Prospect and Harper. Infrastructure projects, 8th Street, South Park, working with the district on North School, the community center, the firehouse renovation, which is under construction right now. We have turned out projects at a higher clip than we did before I was on council.
Summarize.
So, and we've done that by getting engineering help in our public works department, as well as making sure the funding was in place. So these are all priorities, none of them above any others, we're moving them all forward. The ones that have trailed, there's only two, are because they're more complex processes, and they're on the agenda coming forward to us. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Justin. Okay, second question is same targets for action, 12. On this list, you can't complete everything, so give us your list of lower priority projects or issues on the 12 targets that can be moved to later in your city council term. Why should these projects be delayed, reduced, or canceled? Trent?
Well, I am not in favor of doing things that fall outside of the city of Hermosa's scope and what's gonna affect us as residents and guests of Hermosa. So things, for example, like carbon neutrality initiatives for Hermosa Beach is beyond what we here can really make a difference on. That is at the state level, the federal level, and levels beyond us, and that goes right in line with us trying to become our own power agency with a CCA. That was a complete waste of time and a boondoggle, in my opinion, because you're now asking Hermosa Beach, you really can't even manage its own affairs in some cases very responsibly to now become a power company. That was a good example of us wasting time, effort, and energy. And as well as tackling just bigger issues that we really don't need to tackle, we want to focus we want to focus the time, effort, and energy on the city of Hermosa Beach, making it better, making it cleaner. And as Dr. Jordan Peterson wrote in his famous book, The Twelve Rules of Life, we're going to clean up our room, then make it beautiful, and then we'll know what to do next. And we have a long way to beautification in Hermosa Beach.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
All right, thank you, Al. Very quickly, the only two that we haven't done yet are financial policies and long-range plan and encroachments. And both of those are coming forward. I think we have a study session on the long-term financial plan scheduled for sometime in November. That's been one that our finance department has been working on, so it's, there are a lot of moving parts there. And that's why that process has taken some time to get on the council agenda. The other one is encroachments, making sure that we're charging a fair rate for encroachments. So for example, we have businesses that have outdoor dining on city public right-of-way. Space that could otherwise be used for sidewalks if we weren't allowing businesses to have seating on it. Those businesses need to pay a fair rate for that property because it's valuable. We need it for everybody's ability to get up and down the sidewalks. And so there's a balance to be struck there. That's a process that I think will be rolled into the financial discussion that is coming forward shortly. Thank you, Al.
Okay, Mike?
As I said in the first part of this question, a lot of these projects have already been completed, are already on the works. So I look at these twelve target items as a living document. Since some of these are already completed, I would like to introduce some more and I looked to the public for introducing some other targets for action. The one that created three more. So the first one would be a library redevelopment plan. We need to work with the L.A. County Library System to make sure that our library gets renovated. So the library was originally built in nineteen sixty-two. Last renovation was almost twenty years ago. So we need to build a library that's going to serve our community for the next twenty years. I'd like to also look at the parks master plan, the capital improvement project plan was budgeted for money for the parks, but we also need to have a comprehensive study to look at the play structures and also physical activities for citizens of all ages, not just the youth in our community. And the last one I want to definitely introduce is an economic development working group. So we need to have a study with our local business owners and our residents to ensure greater financial success while still preserving the character of our community.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, we'll go to question three for the debate and I'll go over the background for that. Basically, as part of the Hermosa Beach General Plan, we have a downtown strategic plan and we also have a downtown core revitalization. And part of that is a parking strategy. One of the things that's going on in the downtown, since we have so many small lots, if you owned a lot, owned a business, then you actually owned the lot. If you wanted to knock it down, and it did not have a parking at this time, and once it gets knocked down and rebuilt, you have to put parking on it. So the same way with your house, I have a one-hundred-year-old cottage. It has two parking spots right now. But where it could be knocked down, you'd have to have two cars in the garage and then two out. So you'd have to, one of the problems about expanding or a new strategic plan for the downtown revitalization is you're either going to have to add parking on the physical lot that somebody's rebuilding on, or you have to build parking garages. So this question has to do with parking garages and there's three different likely sites that'd be, parking lot A, if you can imagine where Pier Plaza is, just south of it is a large parking lot. I think it holds about ninety or so, maybe more, up to a hundred spots. That could be a multi-level parking garage. The Civic Center, so we're sitting right here in the city hall area and city council chambers. This whole area, this whole city hall could be rebuilt. You could add additional parking here. And the third option would be the community center. Maybe where, one of the things that they talked about is where the tennis courts are or whatever. And the current parking, going underground and adding more parking there. Again, this is to revitalize the downtown and basically, of course, it would be used for visitor car parking. So here's your question for that, and that would be for Justin. What is your opinion regarding the financing and construction of one or more large, multi-level parking structures in order to service the visitor car parking for the Hermosa Beach downtown area? How would the city finance the construction of these multimillion-dollar structures? Justin?
Well, the second part of the question presumes that you would build them. I don't support taking property in the downtown area and building exclusively parking structures on it. I would support mixed use. In fact, there's an owner who owns property between what is now, it was Boardwalk and Sea Sprite, and then Scotty's right around where we have Lot A. And we've met with that property owner and talked about a public-private partnership where both properties would be developed. Because he's proposed ground-floor retail and restaurant, upper-floor office space, which I think is the perfect use of the space that he's talking about, as well as fine dining where the Scotty's property is. That would allow us to leverage that development to build something similar at Lot A, which would be retail and restaurant on the ground floor to create the kind of critical mass for window shopping and walking type of retail activity that you want in a downtown area, as well as provide some parking. And ideally, as we discussed with him, I'd like to see something like the High Line in New York City on the upper deck. An outdoor park where people could go have lunch, have an unobstructed view of the beach and the ocean, and a place for people who work in Hermosa, who live here and who visit here, to go and recreate right in the core of our downtown. So you would use that property for a number of different things, which I think better reflects its value to the community.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Sure. Hermosa Beach Parking has always been an issue during the weekends and especially during the summer. Right now, there's a study session that's going to go before council this week. I actually sat through the business stakeholder portion of that meeting. And I think it's really important that we listen to their issues because to keep our small-town independent local businesses, we need to make sure that they're successful. So the whole parking strategy is intended to encourage the small, independent local businesses in the downtown district, maintain them on a smaller scale, and the small-town character with managing the parking demands fluctuating more effectively. This looks into now on-demand or peak parking times, increasing rates during the high parking demand times, something we need to start managing our parking more efficiently. And also balance that with the wishes of the residents and business owners. I share concerns of the residents of not having new parking structures west of Hermosa Avenue. We have precious property there. Definitely don't want another parking structure that's going to be impeding the view when we're walking along Hermosa Ave, if we're eating in the restaurants along Hermosa Ave. We need to definitely protect that view right-of-way of the beautiful ocean that we live next to. I would consider a public-private partnership up in this area, maybe develop a Metlocks-type development up here. But again, none of that's really on the table right now. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Okay, so no one's really talking about another cement structure parking lot down in the beach area. It's not been on the agenda for a long time. I've been here for five years and we haven't really talked about it. And I would not recommend it as well. But what people are talking about and businesses are talking about is the loss of parking when we run special events that take a week long and they chew up all the parking and our local businesses really lose a lot of revenue. I mean, I'm in sales and every day I have to look at my numbers and account for them. And our local businesses have the same thing. And it's really hard to compete these days, especially when you're competing against the likes of Amazon, if you're a retailer. It is not easy. So every dime counts for these folks. And we need to protect the fact that they, people can come and park in the downtown. Now, the current parking lots, they need to be repaved and repainted and made to look nice and so that people enjoy coming down there and have a nice, clean place to come and park. We certainly don't need another bookend parking structure down there. And when it comes to private partner, private-public partnerships or a parking structure up here or up at the Civic Center, it's just a lot of talk, really, because it's not going to happen. We have so many more projects to do. And we don't need the intensification that's going to come with those big parking structures. We want to keep Hermosa's small-town charm and livability. And the more parking we add, the more intensification we're going to add. And we have enough parking right now, but it needs to be used smartly. And we can't gobble it up in the summertime for all these special events and hurt our local businesses.
Thanks, Trent. Okay, so we're going to go to the debate question four. Oh, by the way, we're going to complete our debate questions four, five, and six, and then there will be audience questions. So out there, if you have, are thinking of any questions, once we finish question six, please come forward one at a time. And I'll repeat it, but what we want is if you're thinking of a question, we want you to ask a question that all city council candidates can answer. So it would not be directed to anyone by name. So you're answering a question that each candidate will answer. So we'll take as many questions that are out there and we'll go through those and then continue on in the debate. So we just had a parking garage question. So if you don't build parking garages, something else possibly may have to happen. In the downtown core revitalization strategy, if you don't do parking garages, you can also do special incentives and provisions to minimize the impact of parking. So like I was saying before, in my house, if it gets knocked down, I'm going to have to put four parking spots in. So they could give me an incentive for my house and just put in two. Well, my house is not a business, but in the businesses in the downtown, they have parking requirements. So you've seen many down there that there are no parking spots physically at that business. So were you to knock it down, you'd have to put parking on it. An easy example is the old Either or Bookstore. You can know where that place is. It's no longer called the Either or Bookstore, but I think a business called Curious is there. That's a building that's, gosh, it's over a hundred years old. No parking on it, really. So were that building to be knocked down, they have to put parking on it, right? That's the regulations right now. So, but how you would eliminate that is you'd reduce the parking requirements or get rid of them. So in order to get a new building. So these special incentives are considered sometimes on a case-by-case basis. But right now, any knocking down of buildings, commercial buildings in the downtown would require some parking to be put on them. But you could change that by doing the special incentives. Okay, here's the question. What's your opinion regarding the reduction of parking requirements, modifications to existing zones, or any new incentives that promote demolition and redevelopment of older, single-story commercial buildings in the downtown area? Obviously, something like this would have consequences. How large of an area in Hermosa Beach downtown should be knocked down and replaced by modern, multi-story buildings? And that would be for Mike?
Sure. I hope none of the downtown area gets torn down for multi-story buildings. As I said in the beginning, I'll work to preserve our small-town character and our unique aesthetic heritage of our neighborhoods, parks, and downtown area. You know, one thing that we have to look for is, and listen to the businesses, is we require twice as many parking spots as Manhattan or Redondo Beach. So getting, you know, having them have a seat at the table to listen to their drop in business over the summer because of events or if they want to simply remodel or rezone their property is something we need to have them allowed, allow them to speak and we need to listen. Currently, right now, there's one parking spot per three hundred and thirty-three square feet of retail. And if you wanted to convert that to a restaurant, it needs to, they would need to increase it to one per one hundred square foot. So it's a massive increase if you wanted to rezone a property. I know that Manhattan Beach, they have less parking requirements for the buildings and for rezoning, but they also have a building moratorium downtown. So they're protecting their historical buildings, but they're also allowing the business owners there the flexibility to maybe rezone or change their business model if they like. So I think they definitely need a seat at the table for any of this discussion and I'm glad that we're addressing that right on council.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Yeah, I'm not really in favor of modifying the parking code right now. The buildings in downtown, those retailers, you can see why it is that they're having a very tough time staying in business. Okay, they have a building, they have a few parking spots on the street, and that's where their customers come to see them. And they're competing against Amazon and paying high rents. So they have to get a lot of turn and they have to get margin in their products. So it's very difficult for them and we need to support the downtown businesses as much as possible. So gobbling up their parking is a real problem and it was hurtful for them. As far as remodeling the buildings, that's going to have to happen when an entrepreneur comes in or a new owner and has a vision. So in terms of us up here pontificating who might do it, we really don't know. That's going to be up to the individual business owner. And I would encourage that. I would love to see that. I would love to see more remodeling, reshaping, retrofitting, rebuilding, and all of that that comes with the good of putting money into your property. But in terms of knocking it down and then having to put two parking spots on the Either or Bookstore, it's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. So we're going to have to deal with what we have and help the businesses by not getting in their way and restricting the people's access to their businesses.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
All right. Well, having lived through Plan Hermosa and the debate that we had over historic preservation primarily focused on residential, what I can tell you is that incentives to preserve are the right way to go as opposed to mandatory requirements. And that's quite clearly, in my experience, where the community is. There are two issues here. One is historic preservation. Parking requirements are not a good tool for historic preservation. It's as simple as that. We have to make sure that we have the most effective suite of incentives for folks to preserve historic properties, whether they be commercial properties or residential properties. That much is simple. Let's talk about mobility and the need for parking. Mobility is changing. Ride-sharing services are here, driverless cars are coming, people are getting around on foot, on bike, on scooters, and other means. So we need to understand that times are changing. There are a lot of potential unintended consequences of changing parking requirements. The Planning Commission took this issue up and the concern that they had was your highest-margin businesses in town are your alcohol-serving establishments, not your retail establishments. And if you reduce parking requirements across the board, your high-margin businesses are able to gobble up retailers and you end up with a city which has more alcohol-serving establishments than you want. And that's not something that Hermosa Beach wants to contemplate. So if you were to talk about modifying parking requirements, it would have to be focused on retail, who are the smallest-margin businesses, the ones who could really use some attention to the parking requirements and the effect that they have on their ability to open and expand their businesses. Thank you, Al.
Oh, great. Thanks, Justin. Okay, we're going to go to question five and we have five and six here, then we'll be right at audience questions. This next one has to do with the downtown strategy. It has to do with a certain document called the Downtown Parking Conceptual Strategy and also the Hermosa Beach, which is called the Hermosa Beach General Plan, which is called Plan Hermosa. And within those documents, they've talked about the downtown strategy and remodeling down there would possibly remove traffic lanes on Hermosa Avenue, possibly put in diagonal parking in order to gain room for wider sidewalks. And that wider sidewalks could lead to outdoor dining and that kind of stuff. So here's the question. What's your opinion regarding the conversion of curb parking to diagonal parking on Hermosa Avenue or the removal of any traffic lanes on Hermosa Avenue? When Hermosa Avenue is upgraded to twenty-foot-wide sidewalks, could a future city council vote to convert existing retail businesses into bars, restaurants, and for outdoor dining? As currently is the case on Pier Plaza. And that would be for Trent?
Yeah, no, I'm not in favor of limiting the streets down in Hermosa. I don't want to see it switched down to one lane. I don't want the diagonal parking to go away. I don't want the vertical parking where the cars take up an entire lane. But what I do want in downtown is I want new lighting, increased police visibility, additional private security, and cameras that put a damper on some of the unkempt and unruly behavior that we have downtown. Cleaning up the late-night sloppiness in the downtown requires the full support of our police department. And as one debater up here has already talked about, we just lost two police officers. And you know why? We lost them because we had them for two years and they got thirty thousand dollars more to go to additional city. And our budget this year, we added eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in payroll to our budget and not one thing, they said, are going to do new with that money. Not one thing. Well, they could have used some of that money to pay our police officers that we trained, put through the academy and had for two years, an additional thirty thousand dollars a year so we can keep them. And so the priorities of this city are skewed. We need to take money and spend it on things that matter back to the residents who pay the taxes and the taxpayers. And doing that would make our city more clean, more healthy, and better for the residents and guests of Hermosa.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
Well, with due respect to Trent, the annual budget isn't where salaries are determined for our police department or anybody else. That's determined in our triennial or triennial labor negotiations. So that, there's no link between those two things. We've already added security. We have private security down there, created a downtown unit. We have cameras down there. We've added lighting. We've added increased trash pickup and other sanitation services. So we've done everything that Mr. Larson is talking about. The question is, diagonal parking that would potentially remove a lane on Hermosa Avenue, this is something recommended in the Roma study, and I support it. Basically, what Roma's saying is that you could have three lanes at non-peak hours on Hermosa Avenue, diagonal parking to allow more parking, and a wider sidewalk to allow outdoor dining on Hermosa Avenue. And then during peak hours, you could eliminate the diagonal parking and go back to four lanes. That, it seems to me, is a good idea because I believe in outdoor parking. One of the things we did as a council was eliminate the parking requirements for snack shops who had outdoor dining areas under two hundred square feet. That enabled Cafe Bonaparte down up Pier Plaza to do what it's done, which is to relocate and create a business that is very healthy and something that I think the community values. We could do the same thing on Hermosa Avenue. So I do support the Roma recommendations and I generally support efforts to create the ambiance that allows our restaurants to be successful and outdoor dining is part of that.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
So I didn't believe that there was any current proposals to widen the sidewalks on Hermosa Avenue. As far as the diagonal parking, that's something that more information would need to look into. But the idea of shrinking Hermosa Avenue was quite controversial in the past and it's a reason why it wasn't acted upon. My major concern, along with most of the community, is that it would push that north-south traffic into residential streets. That's something that we can't have happen. As a father of a young child who pushes a stroll all around town, I think the bigger issue is going to be the accessibility around all of Hermosa Beach, not just in Hermosa Beach, not just Pier Avenue, but we need to look at the accessibility. Beach, not just Pier Avenue, but we need to look at the accessibility all around town. We need to look at mobility issues. We need to improve the safe routes to school, and we need to look, improve our sidewalks. Eighth Street was a great project. It looks beautiful. It increased their mobility in town, and that's something that we need to look for at a whole-community-wide level.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, we're going to go to debate question six. This should go by pretty fast, and then we'll go right to audience questions, and we'll answer every audience question that's out there. Debate question six. How would the city finance the recommendations proposed in the downtown revitalization strategy? Could this money be better spent on other areas in Hermosa Beach and not in the downtown? Justin?
Good question. Thank you, Al. I can give you two options for how you would fund some of the renovations recommended in the downtown revitalization strategy. One is vote for Measure H. Increase our TOT from twelve percent to fourteen percent, add a half-million dollars a year to our budget and our ability to implement things like the downtown strategy. The second is demand-price parking. Cities all over the world have tried it and succeeded, and it not only increases revenue, but it also allows you to control where parking occurs. So when you have everybody focused on downtown and coming here, and you have unused parking in other parts of the city, if you have demand-price parking, you can push them with a price signal where you want them to go and distribute parking around the city, which is not only good for business and mobility, but good for the city's bottom line and how you fund projects like this. So you would do all of the above. PCH is definitely a focus. There is organically a business community coalescing around the southern end of PCH in Hermosa Beach, near CVS, George. And we need to foster that. We need to make sure that we're doing what we can to make the thirty thousand commuters that go up and down PCH through Hermosa every day know that Hermosa's open for business, and whether they need tile and stone, or they want to get a Brito at Rosa's on the way home from work, that they can do that in Hermosa Beach. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
So I think a lot of our downtown revitalization strategies need to focus around the safety of our community. I've spoken with our police officers, and they stated that the new lighting down there has helped quite a bit. There's a smell of bodily fluids that may not be present anymore, or that's a lot less frequent. And so I think designing through the infrastructure has been beneficial. We need to continue to work with our public safety partnership, our public safety partners to ensure that they have proper staffing, equipment, and upgrade our cameras to keep our community safe. We need to maintain the downtown area, but we also need to realize that downtown only represents forty percent of our sales tax revenue. So PCH, I mean, the other, PCH, aviation, other parts of the city, they represent sixty percent of our revenue. We need to look at the other areas, make sure that they're not neglected. We need to make sure that those are, we invest in those other major business corridors, and we keep the businesses throughout the city happy.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Well, major, the major portion of our revenue comes from property taxes, okay? And no one gets price increases like government. Every year, our taxes go up and up and up, and it's baked into the cake. Every time a house gets sold, every time a property gets built, anytime things sell, it's a windfall for the city. So we can track that and forecast it, and we can project the monies we're going to need to make this city better. It's a matter of priorities. And I'll give you a perfect example. The Roma report was just mentioned up here, and how we're going to take parking downtown and make it diagonal and have a twenty-foot sidewalk. And there was a lot of other things in that Roma report that was basically written down, we spent a lot of money on, and then nothing ever happened of it. Okay? We wasted that money. I'm talking about focusing our money, our time, effort, and energy on things that are right down the middle of the field, between the forties, blocking and tackling, things that make this city better, that fix it up, that we can all see, touch, and feel, and use, and know that our tax dollars have gone to making this city better.
Thanks, Trent. Okay, we're going to be going to audience questions, and Mike, you'll be first up on that. A real quick point, after audience questions, yeah, come on up whoever wants to ask a question, and I'll just finish making a couple comments. And if you go to this website, you can see the upcoming questions and all the background information. So just right at the top of the page, it says two thousand and nineteen debate questions. Click on that, and you'll see all the questions. And then I would just mention for the audience questions, if you can pose the questions for all city council candidates to answer, they'll have one minute each.
Good evening. Thank you for putting this on.
Great.
Good evening.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Great presentation. I'm Robert Ernoff. I've lived at one-twenty-four The Strand since nineteen eighty-eight, and I'm a proud resident of Hermosa Beach. I have an issue with the lack of priority in handling the small things, sort of the broken windows issue of policing. I find that the smoking and noise ordinances are never enforced, and that actually affects my quality of life, which is pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Oh, so my comment is, what is your thought? And other candidates in other years have just said, oh, we, we're not going to enforce smoking, we're not going to enforce anything, we don't have the resources for that. And they, you know, you talk about all the big things, parking, changing roads, and I'm sort of looking at the small things.
Great. Thanks, Robert. That would be for Mike.
Perfect. Thank you, Robert, for the question. As far as the quality of life issues, as I said, the current council in this fiscal year has allocated twenty million dollars to the capital improvement projects, so hopefully that'll help with the quality of life issues in our parks, sidewalks, streets, and I hope to continue that moving forward. As far as the smoking noise, the other, my pet peeve, again, with the mobility and access is the trash cans in the cars that stick out into the street, and, you know, people don't park all the way in their driveways. It's an enforcement issue. And so we need to direct the new police chief, whoever he or she is, to direct their troops and their community service officers to make sure that they enforce, they ticket, they, I mean, we're going to be ticketing ourselves, more than likely, as far as for the parking part of it. But as far as the smoking, I feel like most of the residents know that smoking's banned on the pier and surrounding city, in the whole city. So hopefully, they can work with the reporting. And again, I think the easiest way to enforce that is going to be on the pier. It's going to be a concentrated area. We have the community service officers that can, and ticket and enforce that, as well as the police officers down there. But again, that's something with the new police chief. Moving forward, we can, we should direct the enforcement and enforcing our laws before making lots of new ones.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Yeah, these are basic quality of life issues that I would be focused on. So things like cleaning and fixing up broken things, things that are broken, trash abatement, relieving the homeless from homelessness, that's a big crisis coming into our town. And also loud parties. For example, we just are going to allow short-term rentals in the downtown district area, and I don't believe we should do that. I don't believe they belong in Hermosa Beach because they attract weekend partiers and revelers that don't respect our town, and they mess it up and cause a mess. So those, these are the kinds of things that I'm talking about that are right in my wheelhouse, that Trent's core personality wants to fix. I want things that are visible and usable and add to the betterment. And a key part of this would be the police force. You know, we, losing our two officers that we put through the academy, trained, hired, recruited, out of a hundred people, we picked two. And then we get these people, and in two years, they're gone. And when we talk about that money not being baked into the cake, you know what? If they really wanted to keep those officers, we could do it. Okay? We spent eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars on new payroll, new positions, an assistant to the city manager, et cetera, and not one thing tied to it, not one extra trash can purchased. Nothing. No more power washing.
Summarize.
Okay, so I am about that, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
Thank you, Robert. It's a very fair question. Thank you, Robert. We, you know, we experience it, and we certainly hear it, whether it's smoking on Pier Plaza, people not picking up after their dogs, people speeding down the strand. There are a lot of, basically, relatively low-level violations that are occurring around the city. It ultimately is a balance of what we can enforce. Our police department primarily needs to be ready to do things like jump on and stop a burglary on the other side of PCH at any given point in time, like they had to do a week ago. And so the amount of staff that we have in PD, to be able to write tickets for smoking, to be able to enforce the speed limit on the strand, to be able to catch people not picking up after their dogs, is limited. And that's reflected in some of the annoying little things like you're talking about. It's a work in progress for all of us in terms of pushing the police department to have our community services officers, for example, be out on the strand, writing tickets so that the message gets out that you can't rip down the strand at thirty miles an hour on an electric skateboard or something like that, and smoking and picking up after your dog as well. But it's always going to be a challenge for us because that activity is always going to outstrip our enforcement capacity. It's as simple as that. We can't simply just add fifty officers to the police department. We don't have the budget for that.
Summarize.
So what we have done, in downtown in particular, is improve lighting, improve the frequency of trash cleanup. We're about to improve the handling of trash in the commercial area in Lot A, and improve cleanliness, not only on Pier Plaza and Hermosa Avenue, but on the strand as well, with street sweeping and with scrubbers that go up and down the strand periodically to keep it as clean as we can within our budget limits. Thank you, Al.
Next question? Jeff, did you want to go?
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, Jeff Hirsch, thirty-year Hermosa resident. Al, nice to see you again. I'd like to thank Mr. Massey, Councilman Massey, for his proactive stance on accessibility and sitting at the table, whether it be dollar-riot violations or accessibility on A Street. You've been a stand-up guy, and I appreciate it. Mr. DeToye, you reached out to me about accessibility issues. Mr. Larson, if you'd like, I'll be more than happy to give you my phone number when this session is over and we get a little chat. Accessibility is defined, at least to me, as getting through and around our little less-than-two-mile-square-city. You can't do it. You know, we talk about small-town character. I have an extra wheelchair in my house. I invite any one of the three of you to come over to the house. I'll put you in an electric wheelchair for a couple hours. You can see what life is like. It's not a small-town character when you go in Down Valley Boulevard bucking traffic because you can't get through on the sidewalk, and then using A Street as an east-west-access point. It's like the Grand Prix at Long Beach. There's no small-town character about it. A councilwoman about two years ago actually stopped her car and let traffic go around me because she saw me rolling down Valley Boulevard with my dog and said, I can't believe you're doing this. You know? This is not a small-town-character city for people who are challenged physically, be it wheelchairs, be it strollers, as Mr. DeToye has recently discovered now that he's the new parent, or walkers. You can't get around. You guys spent a million-plus redoing A Street. There's still people parking across their apron and jutting onto the sidewalk. Justin, you and I have had this conversation several years ago. You know, there's still people violating it. I know Mr. Benson was pivotal in our access Hermosa working group in defining the A Street parking violations. We initiated citywide garage sale to try to get the cars off the street and the sidewalk and into the garages where they belonged. It was successful to the point where it was recognized nationally. As I said, I invite any one of the three of you to come over to my place. I'll give you an electric wheelchair for a few hours. You can see what it's like. I've been hearing for three years how we're going to have a pathway in the green belt or the beach, and it's not fair to take someone in a chair or who's otherwise physically challenged and deny them access to the beach, which is our jewel in the community. I'll wrap it up now.
We'll put in a question.
We, we had concerts on the beaches here for the fifth consecutive year in a row. They didn't even lay accessible mats out to watch the concerts. You mean to tell me the public works set for five years didn't remember this? It took a city councilman actually calling the public works director and saying, hey, put these mats out. As soon as they did the next weekend, I rolled down there a little late, there were three people in wheelchairs, God bless them, sitting on the beach, watching the concerts and the movie. You know, we need to think a little more proactively about the aging population. The population is not twenty-five-something in Sharkies. It's people like me who've been here for years, who are, they call, aging in place. We have nowhere to go. We don't want to leave Hermosa, yet it's challenging to get around the city. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff. And that would be for Trent.
Yes, okay, so sidewalk improvement and replacement, like it's done at Eight Street, we should have done that and be doing that all over the city where these are major routes. And you don't have to go very far around the city to find that that is not the case, and it's true. And we have lots of roads in town that don't have sidewalks at all. On my street particularly, there's no sidewalks, and those are, those are probably going to stay that way for some time. But where we can, and where it's major traffic areas, we should have accessible sidewalks at every corner, at every ramp. And if they're not there, that's something we could pay for and fund for. We should, we should have that. So I would be for that. As far as the concerts on the beach and putting mats out, yeah, we should do that. Of course we should. And they should, you should be able to go and enjoy that. There are going to be always some limitations to what we can do. But certainly fixing the sidewalks à la Eighth Street is something where it's a safe route to school or a major-through area, we should definitely do.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
Jeff, thanks for your kind words. Thank you for your involvement on the issue for several years. It's a constant issue. It's a constant frustration. I hope that the new curb cuts on Hermosa Avenue, and I believe they're in on PCH, have helped a bit. I want to tell you, the behind-the-scenes work on the design specifications for Eighth Street, the minimum width of a sidewalk under the Americans with Disability Act is thirty-six inches. But the mayor and I worked together with the Public Works Department to make sure that the minimum width on Eighth Street was forty-eight inches because we knew that somebody coming through on their wheelchair was going to scrape their knuckles on the mortar-block wall or the signpost that they were squeezing between. And so I'm proud to say that at forty-eight inches, it even feels a little bit tight, but it's a lot better than it would have been at thirty-six inches. And as far as resetting people's expectations about parking on the sidewalk, I've worked with our police department to make sure that we're enforcing behind the Eighth Street work, to make sure that the community knows that we're not going to spend a million dollars putting in new sidewalks only to have them park on those sidewalks again. And my plan is the same as it has been for the last several years, as I've discussed with you, Jeff, and that is, we start with Eighth Street. That's a catalyst project that has been celebrated as we expected it to be in this community. When I walk up and down Eighth Street, I see it full of couples walking, families walking. There is a great deal of pent-up demand for pedestrian-friendly streets. That project can be a catalyst for what is new in this city and what can be, what we can achieve. And the next phase should be looking at our safe routes to school. Those are defined routes that kids use to get to and from school, and that a lot of the community can use to get around town, including people who are in wheelchairs. And we ought to start next on those to look at what the physical obstructions are, and then what the culture is in terms of people parking on the sidewalk, and begin to change that culture, change that space.
Summarize.
So that those, those parts of town are the next step in making this a pedestrian-friendly town and one that's accessible for people of all different abilities. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Jeff, thank you again for your advocacy on this for the last few years. I have a major appreciation for being in a chair. Broke my leg in sixth grade, had to be in a wheelchair for three months. It is life-changing. Volunteered in muscular dystrophy camp. Most of the young men there have Duchenne's. They're already in chairs at a young age of seven years old, eight years old. So being around chairs, it's a whole new perspective, being a young parent. It's a whole different perspective pushing the stroller around town with the big eighty-pound lab. And I welcome all the new construction of the sidewalks around town. I live on Twenty-Fifth Street. Right up the hill is going to be the new proposed North School. I'm going to work with the school district because right now Twenty-Fifth Street doesn't have sidewalks, has hills on both sides. I didn't think it was possible to walk uphill both ways to school, but I think we can actually do it on Twenty-Fifth Street. do it on 25th Street. But it is scary how fast people go down and with the speed bumps or speed humps, whatever they are on that street, it almost makes people lose control. So I mean, even factoring in that route as a safe route to school is something that we need to have a discussion with the school district. But events, that shouldn't even be a question when it comes to summer events. These events are open to the public. That's people of all abilities, if they are challenged in any sort of way with either a wheelchair or even a walker, or the family that has a wagon with 14 beach chairs and tables and, you know, food for the concerts. I mean, we need to help their accessibility get onto the beach as well to enjoy the concerts. So thanks again, Jeff, for your advocacy. I look forward to working with you more on council.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, next audience question. By the way, everybody who has a question will be able to ask.
Try to make it quick as I can. Is the mic on here? There we are. Dean Francois, longtime South Bay resident here. And I've been involved in the effort to reduce the size of the Pier and Strand Hotel project that may or may not ever occur down there on the strand. But more importantly, eventually, some proposal will come through with something. And we have an issue with the Coastal Act and the residents would like to know if we're going to have a city council that will stand up and protect the Coastal Act when it comes to development, specifically the public view of the ocean from the public plaza, which is right across the parking lot up there at Critters, and also, Slater's that is, and also the public alley use. Now, can we expect that if a developer or property owner buys up both sides of a property on an alley that they're suddenly going to be given the right to build on that alley as it is? Because the Coastal Act, again, wants to prefer coastal access, coastal egress, and the amount of traffic and public access along the coast and the beach. So we residents want to know whether we're going to have a city council member up there that's going to stand behind that Coastal Act when it comes to coastal development, or are you going to take the approach that city staff would want you to take and just wait for the Coastal Commission to decide on it later and let the state agency with people that are not elected by us decide what to do with the property? Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. That will be for Justin.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Al. It's an important question and it's going to be site-specific. You and I have talked about this on several occasions. So you have the Coastal Act, you have the Coastal Commission. Right now, you've had a parking lot at what was the Mermaid, now is Slater's, for a long, long time. We're about to get an extended patio that's going to be built out there, subject to various rules that we imposed when we took input from you and other folks. The challenge you have at that property is if you want to build a hotel there, you only have access from two sides. That is, the north side where the beach house is and the east side where 13th Court dead ends. And so if you are to keep Beach Drive open, assuming that the developer is willing to do that, then your back-of-the-house operations, your linen deliveries, your trash pickup, your food deliveries, all that stuff, needs to come up 13th Court almost surely. Your front of the house, which is your guest pickup drop-off, is going to occur on the north side where the beach house is at this point in time because they have to be basically separated. So can you do that feasibly, keeping Beach Drive open? Beach Drive would likely be closed on a regular basis during deliveries, so you would have to have staff out there, you would have to have some sort of physical barrier presumably so that nobody got in the way of a garbage truck or something else. So it's a complicated issue. But when it comes to the Coastal Act, when it comes to all the other rules and regulations we can apply to the project, we absolutely will make sure that those are applied and those are applied properly to preserve as much as we can coastal access and to make sure that that project is in harmony with the community as best we can.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Thanks, Dean. I appreciate the education with the Coastal Act. Moving forward, I think we definitely need to support the Coastal Act in protecting the views of the public and also the access to the beach. My biggest concern as being a professional firefighter is the means of egress and taking away the alleyway. I've participated in mass casualty incidents and training, I've been in real life, everything like that. And you need corridors to escape in case anything ever to happen down there. So losing that north escape point would just create more choke points moving forward and there's more issues if there ever was an emergency in the future. So my biggest, I definitely understand the Coastal Commission's in taking away the view. I think it's something that we definitely need to focus on. But again, my biggest thing is considering emergency and emergency preparedness in all decisions we make, losing that alleyway is a no-go.
Okay, great, Mike. Thanks. Trent?
Yes, the Strand and Pier Hotel is in real trouble of being built. It's on the precipice of not being built right now because there's two major things. One is the parking for it. To build the parking, to qualify, under our rules, they're going to have to build a huge bathysphere of a parking garage underneath the sand, and it's going to be very expensive and likely bankrupt the property, and that's why the developers are not moving forward. Seventy spaces short. Can you imagine 70 people looking for parking up and down Pier Avenue every day, the crowd that that would cause and the harm that that would do to our businesses? Also, to take the alley away, that's taking public property, that's taking public space that we now access and use, and it's a very busy place. And they bought that land with the kind of implied agreement that they were going to get to use that. But now, most of the people I've talked to in town don't want to see that alley go away. And there's a movement around town, they call it Rally for the Alley, and they're backing. They don't want the alley gone. And so that developer bought that property, a certain size, knowing what he bought and what he paid for it, and I think he needs to live within his means. I think they need to come up with a solution for that hotel. I'd love to see the hotel built, don't get me wrong, but they need to stay within the laws that when they brought the property and what they agreed to when they bought it and not go beyond that.
Thanks, Trent. Okay, next audience question.
My name is Ashley Toll. I've lived in Hermosa for about five years now. And during this debate, question after question, it's been about keeping business owners happy, property owners happy. And obviously, I love that, but 52% or more of Hermosa is renters. And I haven't heard anything about how you plan on, you know, helping us or keeping us happy. So I'm just curious, do you have a plan on as far as rent control or anything that would keep us living here? More and more people my age and, you know, in our category, we rent. Less and less people are buying homes, especially in Hermosa when the home I live in is probably millions of dollars and somehow I doubt that I'm going to have that kind of pocket change anytime soon.
So kind of like stabilization?
Yeah, what are you doing for the renters? We know what you're trying to do for business owners, we know what you're trying to do for property owners, and the more property values rise, it's great for homeowners, it's not great for renters.
Okay, great.
What are you doing for the renters?
Thanks, Ashley. That would be for Mike.
Sure. Kind of fitting for the answer to this question is I actually am a renter. I've rented for over nine and a half years, same place, have a great relationship with our landlord. They live in the back house. We're like family with them. They're very supportive of me running for city council. I'm not in favor of rent control. I think that it does definitely hamper any development in town and would actually take away some units on the market. With Prop 13, I feel like I am a beneficiary of the individuals who bought the property many years ago. They've kept my rent affordable and haven't, you know, pushed me out. So I am in a very fortunate situation as far as renting. I think that, I mean, if you look at the politics in LA County, they're pushing that route as it is. As far as Hermosa Beach leading the charge, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, great, Mike. Thanks. Trent?
Well, I have a lot of empathy for people in your situation because I know it's difficult for the 30-somethings to be able to buy houses in Hermosa Beach. I know it's very difficult. I've been a homeowner for a long time, since 1992, and it took me a long time to get there. I bought my first house when I was 30 years old. You know, the state of California has introduced rental protections. So there's that. We have to comply with the state law, and those are just kind of fluxing through now. And there's a lot of debate on, a lot of questions, the realtors have a lot of questions about it, et cetera. One of the things that we just did, which is going to hurt the rental market, is that we opened up short-term rentals in the downtown area in Hermosa. We're getting ready to do that. And that's going to basically eject people out of their rental units right now because the owner, if he wants to get more money for it for a few weekends a month, can do so. And so I was opposed to that because it's going to take rental properties away from people. And so while it's very difficult, the state has put some controls in that are kind of outside of our control, so we will comply with those to help the renters. And I don't want to see short-term rentals in the downtown area because it's going to take away rental properties that you may live in.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
Thank you, Ashley, for the question. I have three responses, but first let me address the commercial short-term vacation rentals. The eligible properties are less than 150 in the city. That's less than 1% of the housing stock in Hermosa Beach, so it's not going to have any effect on rental rates in the city. With respect to rent control, I also don't support rent control because economists will tell you it distorts the market, and I don't think that's a healthy thing. I think the market has to basically even out to where rents are affordable for folks who want to get into the market. I can tell you two things we've done for rental. As a council, we passed an ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units. So the state issued default regulations for accessory dwelling units. These are mother-in-law units or granny flats. And the city took control of the process, as cities were invited to do, and passed rules of its own. Ultimately, the planning commission had most of the role in putting that together. Ultimately, I voted against it because I thought they were a bit more restrictive than they should have been under the state law. But in any event, the council passed an ADU ordinance, so ADUs are a possibility which can increase housing stock in the city. And lastly, we prohibited short-term vacation rentals in all residential zones in the city for a variety of reasons, including the fact that it takes away residential housing stock and drives up prices. Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Justin. Okay, next audience question. Everybody, everybody will get a chance, whoever needs has a question.
Hello, gentlemen.
Hi.
Adam Olivani, resident. There's been a lot of talk about our small-business community lately, and as kind of a local historian, I've learned that Hermosa has always been a tough place to do business and largely because we're such a small and seasonal community. And it's only getting tougher with the likes of Amazon, especially if you're not a bar on the plaza. So having a thriving small-business community with a mix of retail and restaurants and the kind of businesses we all want to have affects everyone's quality of life, if you're a renter, an owner, or a business owner. So I have a two-part question. One is yes or no. Do you think more city resources should be committed to help our small-business community, either in money or time? And two, what ideas do you have, short-term, long-term, to help our small-business community?
Thanks, Adam. That would be for Trent.
Okay, so the business community and more city resources, yes. I do believe we should have more city resources. We could do a lot more outreach, we could do advertising about Hermosa Beach, we could market Hermosa Beach better. We really don't do any of that at all. It's just not a core focus of our city and staff. A lot of times, they're focused on things that wouldn't even make a difference back to us. For example, like the Community Choice Aggregation or the CCA, wouldn't do anything for us, nothing, except make the city a power company. In terms of ideas to helping the small businesses, we need to not chew up all of their parking for summer events, okay? We need to keep the downtown area really clean. We need to relieve the homeless from homelessness. We need the resources in the police department to send PATH out, the people assisting the homeless, and make sure that we don't have that, the trash cleanup. City cleanliness is a big thing about attracting people to our businesses. Also, the holiday parking and things like that, where the entire month of December, we let people park for free. We need to stop hassling the businesses on small minor code violations. For crying out loud, you stick a sandwich board outside of your business and you're getting a ticket for it. That's just not the way it is. People, unless you compete against them, and I do every day, don't know how tough it is to run a retail operation anymore.
Can you summarize?
Yes, because you're competing against behemoths who have you outgunned at every level. So we really need to protect our small businesses and really look out for them. Otherwise, they're not going to make it. It's too hard. Can't do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
Thanks, Al. Thanks, Adam, for the question. Yeah, there's unfinished business that we have to do, so yes, time and resources will be spent. It's a constant process focused on businesses. We have done a great deal during the time I've been on council. A-frame signs at a discounted rate, limited live entertainment permits so that folks and businesses can have entertainment that's unobtrusive on weekday nights primarily without going through the CUP process. We eliminated the added parking requirement for snack shops downtown. We did the same for Hi-Fi Espresso up on PCH. We approved the longest parking meter holidays in city history. We've improved lighting and cleanliness. We brought back the AVP. We added ride-share zones. The list goes on and on, the ways that we have made efforts to help businesses. My long-term plans include pivoting to, as I mentioned earlier, taking a look at the south end of PCH because, as I said, I think we organically have the critical mass of a business community coalescing there. It seems to be focused on building materials, whether it be new bathrooms, new tile and stone, new furnishings, new interior decoration, all that stuff, which I think is terrific because given the amount of developers we have in the beach cities and the amount of development going on, if we could nurture a community like that which thrives because developers are down there getting everything they need in Hermosa, that would be terrific. So it's opportunities like that that we want to take advantage of and foster that as much as we can while we also keep our eye on the ball downtown and we look to improve places like aviation. We've done a terrific job up in Artesia and PCH with Robinow and Lazy Acres, I'll mention. That area has transformed. So we're going to continue to do a multi-pronged attack and look to do exactly what we can do to foster good development. Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
First part of your question is absolutely. The second part of that question, we definitely have to ring in our summer events and make sure that our local businesses, especially on Lower Pier, don't lose hundreds of thousands of dollars in one weekend. So that's something we need to support. We need to make sure that the business community has a seat at the table. There's a famous saying, "If you don't have a seat at the table, you're probably on the menu." We have to not just, we have to listen to them, not just hear them, but listen to the business owners in town, see where we can make improvements. You know, the city approved the Assistant City Manager this year. I probably would have voted no on it because I would rather have that be a business economic development position. So we need to have that person in staff that only works for us, but also works to help make these businesses sustainable and profitable. When I was on Emergency Preparedness Advisory Commission, I created a single-page pamphlet for business emergency plans. There's a stat that says 40% of businesses won't reopen after a natural disaster, 70% won't reopen after a terrorist attack. So if we want to keep the small, eclectic, you know, business community thriving, then we also need to make sure they're prepared for not if, but when an earthquake happens. So we need to make sure that they're emergency-prepared for emergencies and we also need to support them in day-to-day operations and cut some unnecessary regulations.
Great, thanks, Mike. Okay, next audience question.
I want to kind of piggyback off of the former question. So homelessness problem is here. We citizens need to feel safe to shop, walk around with our kids, basically live our daily lives. What camping or sidewalk ordinances are you going to work on aimed at controlling homeless persons? Trent, I think you're the only one who talked about homelessness and you said that to relieve homeless of homelessness, are you suggesting we house them here? Or, I just don't understand. But homelessness is a problem and I'm wondering how each of you are going to address it.
Thanks. Okay, Justin, you're up on that.
All right, thank you. Good question. We had a multi-meeting community process to adopt a homelessness plan in 2018. And we have a homeless population that has a consistent demographic with our other beach city neighbors, and we have among the lowest per capita population of homeless people in all of the beach cities and all of the South Bay. We have, as of the last count, 25 homeless people residing in the city of Hermosa Beach. 15 of them are on the streets, 10 of them live in vehicles. The challenge we have is that it's unconstitutional to criminalize sleeping in a car or on the street unless you provide overnight accommodations in the city limits. That's what the Ninth Circuit Federal Court of Appeals has said. And so we have our homelessness plan, which was a product of the community meetings I mentioned, which brought together law enforcement, faith communities, beach city's health district, LA County beaches and harbors, LA County fire and lifeguards, and LA County mental health department, and a whole list of stakeholders, including members of the public. And it sets out five basic goals, and I'm just going to touch on three of them. But the first one I want to mention is goal number one, which is continuing our response. So working with the regional groups like PATH and Harbor Interfaith and LA County Mental Health and LA County Beaches and Harbors to make sure that our city staff, our police department, knows who our homeless population is, knows that they can get information to those residents, to make sure that they know how to get services and where they are and what services are available to them.
Summarize.
We need to coordinate with the police departments from other cities, as we are with quarterly meetings, and we need to make sure that we're doing the prevention efforts that we can and that we've still done, making sure all point-of-contacts in the city have the information they need so that the homeless residents that we have in the city know services are available and that they are being taken care of. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Thank you for the question. Homelessness is a complex issue and we can't simply just get rid of the homeless. We have to find long-term solutions. We must continue to work together with our neighboring cities to help get homeless individuals and families into permanent housing while we invest in programs that help keep people in their homes. We need to connect those in need of supportive services, both physical and mental health care, to ensure that they get the assistance that they need. I've spoken with our police officers about the issue and what has worked locally. They told me great success stories while working with PATH, people assisting the homeless, and our regional approach to combating the issue. Currently, the city council adopted that five-year homeless plan in 2018 based on limited grant funding. That's already been spent. We need to look towards long-term solutions. We need to address this homeless issue and protect our family environment in Hermosa Beach. Statistics show the average age of a homeless person is under the age of 18. I've heard numbers of 12 and even nine years old. For these young people, homelessness wasn't a choice. We need to offer the homelessness better choices, comprehensive services, and opportunity to lead fuller lives.
Great, Mike, thanks. Great. Mike, thanks. Trent?
Okay, the homeless situation is a real and growing problem for Hermosa Beach and homelessness affects us all. And it is good for no one for the homeless to be homeless. So, when I talk about relieving the homeless from homelessness, I'm talking about doing what we can within the given laws that we are bound by today to make sure that these homeless persons are coaxed or offered a shelter where they can go to or some other place that they can go to because it is good for no one and it is causing now real health concerns. And in fact, it's a bigger problem than just Hermosa Beach as everybody knows because there are other cities that have a much worse problem and it's coming our way. And you can see it. If you just look, you can see more and more homeless people coming in. So, I want to spend the resources, the time, the effort, the energy, fund the police department, fund our third-party outreach programs and put this on a high priority account that we really take our resources and we deal with this because these unhelpful and unhealthy court decisions that have put us and bound our hands in a way to deal with this are not doing California any good. They're not. And at some point, something bad is going to happen, which is then going to cause another court decision to say that we can do more than we're doing now. And for some of the really mentally ill and drug addicted or both, there may come a time when mandatory sheltering is part of the solution because they're incapable of taking care of themselves and we can't allow us as good people to watch this. You know, most of the, a lot of them anyway, they're dying on the streets. They're literally dying on the streets from all kinds of things. And that's just, that's just not who we are.
Can you summarize?
Yeah, that's not the heart of Hermosa. The heart of Hermosa says, "We're going to do what we can to relieve the homeless from homelessness." Now, we are somewhat, our hands are somewhat tied, but we're going to fund this and we're going to protect it and we're going to send out the best people we can hire and buy and find to help these homeless get a place to go and off of the streets of Hermosa. No tents in the parks, no tents on the beach, no sleeping bags on the beach, nothing on the greenbelt. That's what I'm about. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Okay, next audience question. Hi, Tony.
My question, we've heard a lot tonight about sustaining and growing our business community and the importance of that. Well, the sustainability is built on growth and for growth, we need a road infrastructure. We don't have the east-west corridors to reasonably support the truck traffic that we're bringing into the city. The general plan did not address if we grow the community this way or that way, what is that going to mean to our infrastructure needs related to truck traffic? Now, we've taken steps to make Pier Avenue very unfriendly for trucks, make Gerondo very unfriendly for trucks with the berms that we put in and this traffic is all being routed, or not all, but it's being pushed more and more to Twenty-seventh Street, Gould. Now, we have a problem there. The sidewalks are about that wide, they're obstructed by telephone poles. The houses are old wood frame houses. We've got tons of truck traffic running in and out, okay? Both servicing northwest Hermosa and transiting into the downtown. It's not safe, okay, to have these trucks running this far from the curb. It's not safe to have the telephone poles there. The noise cannot be mitigated to acceptable levels and I want to know what your plan is to deal with it.
Great, Tony. Thanks. Mike, you're up.
Perfect. Well, I definitely understand the pain and agony on Twenty-seventh Street. I spend about two hours a day at Valley Park with my little daughter and we see these trucks rip up and down the hill and, I mean, there's kids playing there. I mean, one simple mistake of a kid running up that hill a little bit too quickly and these big trucks can't stop that efficiently. We definitely have to work on mitigating the, or minimizing the impacts of the east-west corridors. The problem is, I mean, we're 1.43 square miles. I mean, it's going to be an issue. We can't stop all construction on primary residents. I mean, if a property owner comes in, they want to remodel their home, we can't just say no. And we need to look at alternate routes, but if you're doing anything on the north side, that's the only access coming down Gould for the north side of town without going to Manhattan Beach. It is an issue. It's something we need to work on. We have a lot of construction projects going on, a lot of residents getting remodeled and rebuilt right now. I think limiting some of the commercial construction will help mitigate a little bit of the issues. But the sidewalks on Twenty-seventh Street, I fully understand that. The stroller barely fits on those tiny sidewalks and when I'm walking up and down the street, it definitely is a little scary feeling with those big dump trucks right there. So, it's something that as a council member, I'll definitely work with you and work with the community that lives on the street, especially with North School going in right there. That probably will be the approved route for the trucks for demo and construction. So, there's a lot of construction projects right there and we need to help mitigate and help the neighborhood out.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Sustainability requires a growing economy. All of us want more and more and more in our daily lives and healthcare is a great example of that. How are we going to sustain doing more and more with healthcare? Well, that requires roads as an infrastructure. We need roads. These are the things that we have to have, essential to maintain our way of life and to build more. So, specifically on Twenty-seventh Street, when you're going down Twenty-seventh Street, down past the north end, down into, there's Greenwich Village, the intersection there. And the city's identified that as an intersection that we need to improve and make better. And we've allocated about a million dollars to do that. It's budgeted, it's talked about, but I would like to see that come to pass. And I know there's competing ideas for that money. For example, one of the competing ideas would be to put a microgrid solar panel system on top of the firehouse. And I don't think that's a good idea. Not that it doesn't make power, but that it doesn't touch and feel the residents, okay? If we were to redo that intersection down at Greenwich Village, that would make the truck traffic a little bit better, the pedestrian traffic better, it would be safer and we could see it and it would touch and feel all of us that use that space. Something that is like a solar power microgrid on top of the firehouse, we don't see it. We get to hear that it saved us money, but that's it. So, I'm in favor of infrastructure projects, improving street traffic and knowing though that for us to maintain our way of life and increase it and to do all the things that we want and to get all the betterment that we want, that we ask for every day, we need to keep the lifeblood of this economy going and that's through vehicle traffic.
Can you summarize?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Trent. Justin?
All right. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Tony. Five points is not a competing project. It's already been funded. So, that intersection down by what is now the north end bar is going to be looked at in terms of a potential redesign very quickly. Increased traffic is a result of increased economic activity. That's the simple truth. There's more real estate development than ever before in the history of the city. Consumer expending is at historically high levels. That means more deliveries, more pickups to all of our businesses. It's a simple truth. There are only five corridors in the city that connect PCH and Hermosa Avenue. There's only one in north Hermosa and that's Twenty-seventh Street where you chose to buy a house. There is going to be truck traffic. There is truck traffic and we can't keep it off Twenty-seventh Street anymore than we can keep it off Eighth Street or Second Street or Gerondo or Pier Avenue. It's as simple as that unless they're not using it as the most direct route to go where they go. And so, in that case, we need to equitably distribute the traffic.
Can you summarize?
Not at all. It is safe. There have been multiple meetings with the mayor, multiple meetings with the police chief and repaving on Twenty-seventh Street. That corridor has gotten a great deal of attention, all right? So, truck traffic is a necessary part of the economic activity in the city. And you've had opinions from the city attorney, you've had a lot of contact with city staff. We fundamentally disagree with you on sequo. The impacts of that have been evaluated and studied and that street operates safely for vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic. Thanks, Al.
All right. Thanks. Okay, we'll go over to the next audience question. Hi.
Hello. I'm Jose Bacayao here in Hermosa Beach. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight and running. I know it's a lot of people that have a lot of questions. Mine has to do with your leadership and the environment. I work with many families and their kids in the communities here, not just in Hermosa but in other parts of the South Bay, and focusing on their health and focusing on the future of their environment, especially their kids. My family and many families here in Hermosa Beach are looking for courageous and effective leaders that will take action to protect the health of our residents, specifically in relation to climate health. And there's a lot to choose from. Some we've spoken about today. We can talk about greenhouse gas emissions from commercial and residential uses. We can talk about food waste, plastic waste initiatives, expansion of the EV fleet for our city and for our police, water conservation, CCA. The list is huge. So, my question for the three of you, if you were elected to serve our community, what type of environmental leader would you be? And can you please describe your vision for Hermosa's climate action plan? Thanks.
Thanks, Jose. That would be Trent.
Okay, so in my daily job, I do a lot of work with companies to reduce their environmental carbon footprint and I track that and we advocate for a lot of things that they do like increased truck traffic, reduced shipments, environmentally friendly products, recycling, remanufactured products, et cetera, et cetera. I am also on the Leadership Council for the company I work for, which is a big Fortune 500 company. I am one of the key members on the environmental team. So, every week or two weeks, I'm in a conference call about what we're doing as a company. Now, how's that translates into Hermosa? I am focused on improving this city in a lot of basic ways, okay? When you make things better in the city, it is more environmentally friendly. When I talk about the environment, I talk about the human environment. How have we affected? What are we having to live through? How are we going to sustain our growth? How is it that we, as the most productive citizens in the world that have to work the hardest to keep this economy up and going and everything that we want, how are we going to sustain ourselves? And that's why I talk about visible and usable improvements that add to the betterment of the lives of the living. And I have read about this in fiction and in fact and in philosophy. And it will help us. It will help us maintain our own existence and do better. And besides, the United States is the cleanest country in the world and getting cleaner all the time. The rest of the world needs to follow our lead. We're doing a really good job with environmental cleanup. For example...
Can you summarize?
Yes. For example, we have more standing saw timber now than we did in 1850. We have grown the forest back. I bet you didn't know that. And now ninety-three percent of all wood products in this country come off private lands. So, when you use wood products, you're helping family farms grow trees. We're now growing trees off family farms for all the wood. We've grown the forest back. Much of this nation is a carbon sink. You can look that up, US.gov.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
All right. Thanks, Al. Thanks, Jose. I'm going to focus on carbon reduction, given that Greta Thunberg just addressed the UN and I think put elected officials appropriately in their place on that issue. Trent, for whatever reason, is opposed to community choice aggregation. Clean Power Alliance is a group started by the county of LA that our neighboring beach cities, Redondo Beach and Manhattan Beach, are both members of. It's not a complicated formula. You take control of where you buy your power from and you get cleaner power at lower cost. There's really no counterargument against it unless, of course, you traffic in conspiracy theories and information that can't be justified with any examination of the facts. Beyond that, we need to continue to do what we have been doing, which is encourage alternative modes of transportation, building out our Bicycle Master Plan by adding bike lanes, which we've done on Valley and Ardmore and on Pier, adding bike racks to make this place somewhere that people want to come to on their bikes rather than getting in their cars. We are the perfect-sized city to get people out of their cars, to do their daily chores and go out for their nightly and weekend entertainment and otherwise. And our friends in Redondo Beach have proven that it actually works for the community and our business community because when they redid Harbor Drive and put green lanes in, foot traffic increased at businesses along Harbor Drive. The data is as clear as it could be. Bike-friendly streets encourage patronage to businesses along those streets. We need to continue to do that so our kids and our community can get out of their cars. And we need to do, continue doing what we've been doing, which is encourage cleaner modes of transportation by building out our electric vehicle charging infrastructure to encourage people from all over the region to come down on their weekends to get lunch and drinks and entertainment in Hermosa Beach. Thank you, Al.
Great, Justin. Thanks. Mike?
Sure. I think protecting our environment all starts with us personally. Myself, our household's running off 100% renewable energy from SAE, drive a zero emission vehicle. And unfortunately, on the professional level, we're burning down more forests and I feel like we're growing. I spent two weeks of the Ferguson Fire in Yosemite last year and that was a hard one because I love Yosemite. It's my favorite national park. And it was kind of a trippy feeling driving through Yosemite Valley, having to be a ghost town and only fire engines in there. I've seen the effects of climate change. I've talked to the neighbors out in the forest and asked them, "Hey, what was it like growing up as a kid here, you know, thirty, forty years ago?" "Oh, we had four feet of snow all winter long." "Oh, what'd you have this year?" "Oh, we had two inches. It's day-to-day." So, something is changing out there and we need to do our part in Hermosa Beach to make sure that we are helping protect the environment for my daughter, for your kids, for everyone, for the next generation out there. So, thank you again, Jose, for the question. And one last thing, I found out this week that I am proudly endorsed by the Sierra Club, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, next audience question. Anybody? Come on up. Hi, how you doing?
Hanging in there.
Good.
My name is, hello, my name is Ken Schusler and I live on First Street. And I would like to know what is the status of the Fiesta and how the candidates feel about it. During the last election, at one of the debates, there was some talk about canceling the Fiesta. Apparently, some folks are not happy with it, but could you address that issue or is it an issue? Maybe it was great this year, but that's it.
Thanks for the question. Yeah, Justin?
Sure. Thank you, Ken. So, the council appointed a Fiesta Subcommittee of the Mayor and Councilmember DuClo and they had a lot of meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, the business community, as well as the public. And the upshot of that was we maintained in our contract with the Chamber, two Fiestas a year, so the same format we've had, Memorial Day and Labor Day, but we've continued to try to deliver the message as the businesses have and as the community has to the Chamber about what it would like to see. And there's a balance that has to be struck because the Chamber will tell you fairly that the Fiestas are how they fund their operations, which includes scholarships and the St. Patrick's Day Parade and the tree lighting and the New Year's Eve ball drop. While at the same time, it's clear from a lot of members of the community that it can be disruptive and over-commercialized. So, it's a work in progress. We continue to try to achieve the optimal balance that will keep the community happy, but it's worth pointing out that there are pretty broad divergence of views in the community as to whether or not we should downsize the Fiesta or keep it the way it is. And we're doing our best to harmonize that. And what we've come up with at this point is to keep the timeframe we have, the two weekends, but continue to try to work to make it more reflective of the local artist community and something a little more community-oriented than it has been. Thanks, Ken. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Thank you for your question, Ken. Fiesta Hermosa is, I feel like the footprint grows a little bit more each year and, you know, it is, it is created, or it is put on by the Chamber, which is supposed to support our local businesses, but a lot of local businesses actually lose business that weekend. I feel like this event this year was done a lot better. I feel like there was a lot more art down there. The live music was great and, you know, I didn't see any mattresses for sale on Hermosa Avenue. So, I feel like there was a little bit of, it came back around to being a more favorable thing, but a lot of my neighbors and a lot of my friends don't, you know, go down there maybe one day or they avoid the weekend altogether. I would love to see if there were the talk about cutting down to one weekend, maybe save the September date as a sidewalk sale more to support our local businesses and to have a kind of a back-to-school event also. So, it's the last weekend before our kids go back, throw a couple concerts on the beach, have some sidewalk sales for back-to-school sales, really support our local businesses and don't get necessarily as many out-of-town people, but again, have it be a family fun event.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Ken, I'll get right to your question, but first I'd like to talk about the Clean Power Alliance and CCA. The only thing the Clean Power Alliance has ever produced is votes on city council. They are a complete middleman. They're a broker. And what would happen if we had a clean, we had the CCA, it would be a regulated utility versus a slightly regulated utility. They would ping-pong off each other and rates would go up and there's nothing we could stop about it. Yes, Ken, to your question, I love the Fiesta. I go every year. I have six or seven original pieces of art where I've spent real money down there. It's the only place I can go anymore where I can see a concert on the rail, like when I was young. I'd be right on the rail, right next to the person singing, and I love that. And I go down every year and I do, that's when I do a little dancing. And so, I, and that Fiesta helps our small businesses. All the business owners love that Fiesta. They want to keep it and it helps them. It gets traffic in their stores. It keeps people coming back. People come from all around LA to go to that Fiesta. It's one of our biggest attractions in the summer. So, you know, when you talk about helping our small businesses and helping them compete against the likes of Amazon and keeping them in business, you got to think about the Fiesta. It's also a tradition here now in Hermosa where people come to understand it and the start of summer and the end of summer. It's a beautiful thing and I don't think we should be running them into the ground.
Great, Trent. Thanks. Next audience question. Hi.
Hi, my name is David Simmons, relatively new to the city. I noticed that last winter, many of the beaches in Hermosa... I noticed that last winter, many of the beaches in Hermosa Beach lost their rating from an A to a C in the months of the rainy season more or less, the months of November and December. And then in March, we punted on stormwater, on the stormwater project. What do you believe the council or the city's responsibility is with regard to treating stormwater going forward as we approach a new winter?
Thanks, David. Mike?
Sure. Well, I'm 100% supportive of the stormwater capture and treatment. That project's been a long time coming, and unfortunately, I think through some communication miscues on the city's behalf, that that project, there wasn't enough lead time for the residents in the surrounding areas, and I think this council did the right decision in punting the project. And hopefully, we can find a location in Redondo that would be beneficial for everyone. We did have abnormally large amount of rain this winter, which was great. It's kept my fire season down this year, so it's been really nice being able to enjoy the summers here. But one thing with that rainy season, we also have to look at all the increase in mosquitoes this year as well. So, we need to make sure that our, the mosquito treatment and the vector controls is making sure that we are taking care of that. But again, I'm 100% supportive of the stormwater infiltration project. We need to capture that water before it goes into the ocean and then also treat it, so hopefully make it drinking water one day. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
The idea of ripping up the Green Belt and putting in a lightning-shaped bolt cement pond underneath the ground was a bad idea. It was also a bad idea to consider putting it into South Park. That would have caused massive disruption to a place that we just rebuilt and is packed every day with people. The infiltration project is a good thing, right? We passed bond money to build this, but its natural place around here is over at the AES site. When that eventually gets worked through and we get some land, that's where it needs to go. There's a lot of talk about refurbishing the old Salt Lake that was there, making some parkland. Besides, most of the water that comes through and runs out the one, out the channel here is Redondo Beach's water. It's not even Hermosa's. I would be in favor of capturing Hermosa's stormwater with smaller projects that we could do on our own. Okay? There's, there's some that are just ready-made. It's shovels, it's bulldozers, it's, it's product and equipment, and we could fix it. But the one that they're talking about, the big one, that we had slated for the Green Belt, which was a bad idea, was a major infrastructure project, and it, it has to do with our tin ear. Like, we're not listening to the residents. I don't know how that even came to be, that that, somebody thought that was a good idea. And even if it wasn't going to go there, to put it in South Park's a bad idea. But to put it over to the AES plant somewhere near where the old Salt Lake's going to be, that's a good idea.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
All right. Well, we should be doing everything we can do, is the answer to the question. And so, that project that was slated to go in the Green Belt is now in the process of a discussion between Redondo Beach, Torrance, LA County Flood Control District, Manhattan Beach, and Hermosa Beach as to who's going to take over lead agency status on that project and how the parties are going to move together to get that project or a series of projects moving forward that are going to meet this permit limit at the end of the storm drain. As has been pointed out, Redondo Beach contributes just over 50% of the flow to that storm drain. Torrance is mid-thirties in terms of its contribution, and Hermosa's is about 13%. So that was the fair issue that came out of that discussion, was if this is the single biggest project in the enhanced watershed management plan, is it appropriately located in Hermosa Beach, in a densely populated part of our city, in, on a piece of beloved open space? So, that was ultimately the challenge that we faced, and right now, we're working through, making sure that we capture the same volume of stormwater, but we do it in a way that's equitable with the partners to make sure that one city doesn't get saddled with finding a solution to the stormwater contribution from every other city.
Can you summarize?
I'll lastly point out that part of the discussion has been simplistic solutions like the AES site. What Trent may not understand is that the AES site is heavily contaminated, and it's going to take years to remediate that site before they would consider putting a stormwater infiltration project there, because you can't mobilize those contaminants until you've cleaned them out. So, there are challenges, although it may be simple to look across the street at the Edison Power Line easement and think that they should let us build it there, or the AES property and think it should be built there, but it's a lot more complex than that. Thanks for the question. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Next audience, audience question? Hi.
Hi, good evening. I'd kind of like to dovetail on that particular topic as a resident of the Morengtown Homes and being a part of that discussion. How do you propose to improve upon the communication and bringing in the loop, the stakeholders in these types of conversations? It seems a little hit or miss at times, what topics get the stakeholders involved right from the get-go versus what topics the stakeholders are kind of finding out the hard way and then getting involved after certain things have already taken place, which at times costs the city money, and we recognize that. So, my question to you is, how are you going to improve upon, one, the transparency, and two, opening up these conversations at an earlier time where we can all be involved and not be trying to catch up and then therefore have some financial consequences down the road?
Thanks. Thanks. W for Trent?
Well, for anything on the Green Belt, anything of this size, of this magnitude, we're talking bulldozers, trucks, acres of buried dirt, we need to involve the public from the jump, from the get-go, even when we're thinking about it. Like, this had to generate and start at some point, right? So somebody had the idea that it would be a good idea to put the infiltration project on the Green Belt, then you know where that comes from? That comes from thinking about things outside of Hermosa Beach. Like, this is an environmentally friendly project, once it's in, right? I mean, it's supposedly keeping the ocean cleaner, so these things drew bigger concerns than the concerns of the residents who live right on top of this that was going to be built. So, we can't do something like this on really sensitive land. It needs to be in someplace that is currently open or undeveloped, and over by the post office or down by the AES site, there's a bunch of land, it's covered up, you know, power lines go over it now. There's certainly land over there that is not as sensitive. So, when we're talking about a big infrastructure project like this, we would need to involve the public right away, upfront, at the very first, to see if it's going to be, even be accepted. And it was a bad idea to begin with. And then when they built, when they designed a lightning bolt-shaped pool to fit in there, it was incredible, honestly. And then to go to South Park and say, we're going to dig up South Park, incredible. That is a tin ear. That is not listening to the voice of the people.
Can you summarize?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Trent. Justin?
Yeah. Exactly. The point that you just made is part of what has come out of the process of evaluation. So, the process of developing the enhanced watershed management plan that included the Green Belt infiltration project occurred years before I joined the council, and there were public meetings, but they were in Manhattan Beach, and they were probably missed by the bulk of the community near the projects that are in that plan. And that ultimately was one of the shortcomings of that process. And that was acknowledged when we met a year ago, I think in June 2018, and looked at, how do we, how did we get here? What ends up happening in those plans is you look at two primary metrics. The technical metric of, how are you going to capture this stormwater, and if you do, is it going to allow you to meet the permit limit at the end of the storm drain? And the second is, the cost-effectiveness of it. Citing a project on private property, for example, where somebody can limit your access or charge you for access to that land rather than a piece of public property is one of the factors that goes into the evaluation. What wasn't considered was the impact on the community surrounding each of these individual projects. And so, part of the discussion with respect to that very project going forward is, how do we incorporate that into the process of evaluating the feasibility of sites? So that message has been delivered, and that message is part of what we're carrying forward to try to make sure that the process of finding an alternative site or sites for the project does reflect community input.
Okay. Great, Justin. Thanks. Mike?
Thank you for your question. Hopefully, your daughter won't have to find the notice on your garage and bring it to you one morning. We had a great conversation at the Pancake Breakfast about this. So, communication was an issue. Same issue with the stormwater infiltration project, but also the Teen Choice Awards. We're hopefully going to get better at that. We are getting a new website in the next few weeks or months, hopefully, which will help the ease of information for accessing, for the residents to access. But going back to the stormwater infiltration project, you know, Manhattan Beach has all of their capture systems on the Green Belt. They're just a lot smaller. They're not a lightning bolt size. So there are other ways to capture it in public areas, but I had a great conversation with one of the councilmembers up there and brought up this project to him, and he was saying that all their captures are on the Green Belt. So it is a way to protect our environment, protect our bay, lessen the burden of a massive project, but smaller ones along, along the way. But again, as a city, we definitely need to improve our communication. Hopefully, it gets better with some newer leadership and some of the newer managers that are bringing in, so.
Thanks, Mike. Next audience's question? Anybody?
Hi, Andrea Valcourt, on Seventh Street. Been here about twenty years. And my concern is climate crisis that we're experiencing, and Hermosa is in a very vulnerable place when it comes to sea rise. So, while we can't necessarily see the steps that are necessary to help with carbon emissions, environmental impact situations, what is your plan for how we're going to protect not only our little town, but we, our air does not just stay within the 1.4 quarter miles that we're in, but we spread out and the other air comes from our other cities? How are we going to do our share to help with climate crisis and to protect our beaches from the sea, the sea rise? I think we're all in this together, and we all have to work toward that, so I look forward to your opinions on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Justin?
Thank you. It's a great question. I won't add to the answer I gave to Jose a little while ago about what we need to do in terms of reducing our carbon footprint, but what I will say is that the city, in the last four years, adopted a sea-level-rise adaptation plan. I think it's a terrific plan. We're actually in decent shape relative to some other cities in terms of what sea-level-rise poses as impacts to the city. For example, there are other cities that already have seawalls. Not a pretty picture for them going forward in terms of what happens when sea-level-rise comes up. It's going to be washing across streets, getting into people's front yards, into their sliding glass doors, into their houses, and other problems. I think we're in better shape than that, but the bottom line is, we need to seize the economic and quality of life opportunity to change the way we live and to live in a way that's more harmonious with the needs of the planet, that sustains this generation and all future generations. If we do that, we are going to sell technology to the world, just like we already are, but we're going to do it at a greater scale, and that's going to be good for all of us. It's going to be good for everybody, from the kid in Fontana who's getting asthma because the air is so dirty, to the venture capitalist who lives right here in Hermosa Beach who's developing the technology that we sell to the world. Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
When I go to work, I get to breathe everyone's car emissions in SUVs out in Riverside because it's a nice little basin where all the air gets to go, and I get to breathe it when I'm out there. So, I fully support the issues with, with climate change. One advantage we do have for sea-level rises, we do have a wide beach, but communities like Malibu aren't as lucky as us. Our wide beach should help us with the rising sea levels. But again, we need to do our little part. It's great seeing our small business owners out there already embracing this, using greenware, using, you know, these plastic-like cups that are biodegradable already before any, you know, bans or laws, before, they're ahead of their time. We will eventually get there as a state, as a county, as a city, and we need to keep using sustainable technologies and products out there to help protect our environment. What we saw happen in the rainforests this year was terrible with all, everyone essentially burning their own forest down to create farmlands, but we just need to pursue effective city policies so we can do our part. And again, it all comes down from personal accountability, and we need to encourage that with our residents.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
This is a real big question, and it involves much more than just California and Hermosa Beach, but essentially, the United States is, is the cleanest country in the world and getting cleaner all the time. And it is our, the United States, we lead the world in this. We are the ones that need to keep going, and we need to maintain our economy and build it so that we can produce the technologies and show the rest of the world how to clean up the messes that they are making. As far as pollution goes, you know, that's something I think that we can attack right away. So the, the things that are outflowing through our rivers, I think if we had machines of some sort in front of them to collect the trash on the way out, that we could do a better job with that. Relieving the homeless from homelessness would keep trash out of our river basins, because that's a big contributor to it right there. You know, California, the United States leads the world, and California leads the United States. We already do more in this state at a macro level than any other state in the Union for our environment, and that's great. I'm all for that. And as somebody who's lived here a long time, I can see the environment getting cleaner. Cars are getting cleaner. If you look at the gains in reductions in pollution and greenhouse gases, all the gains and reductions are being driven by United States industry. It's going down and down and down, and they're reporting more gains, more gains, more gains. In my day job, I get a lot of this information as throughput, and we, we pass it on to our customers. So, I think that the United States needs to continue to prosper and that by our leadership, we will drive down pollution and greenhouse gases by showing the rest of the world that we're doing that.
Thanks, Trent. Next audience question? Hi, Sandy.
Excuse me. Sandy Seaman, Hermosa Beach. My question is on our city staff. Recently, city staff made the election what to charge this Teen Choice event, and it turned out we only made $130,000 when a locations manager that I've known for years said that the site, just for the beach alone, would be $50,000 a day. So we could have had maybe a half a million dollars in our pocket and more. Staff makes decisions about events, and as we look at staff, we see now assistant city managers, we see environmental managers, we see environmental assistants, we see a whole expansion of staff. And I'm not quite sure, and that's what your question's going to be, that some of this is being warranted when we can't keep two firemen, I mean, two policemen, we lose our fire department, and on and on it goes. Now, we always compare ourselves to Manhattan Beach, and here lies the second part of the question. This staff works four days a week. We don't get full service in this city. We don't get it at the planning commission on Fridays, letting contractors do a four-day deal and then wait till Monday on a holiday. Sometimes it's eight days before we get back into the planning department to get an answer. And so this carries on and on and on with enforcement, carries on with all the other issues I just brought it up. On a major weekend when there's a big event, the event manager's gone because they have Fridays off, and so forth and so forth. So, do you believe that we should look to how staff is expanding itself? And most importantly, don't you believe it's time to do what Manhattan Beach and all the other cities have done? This fiasco would happen ten years ago about gasoline and cars? And bring back our staff, who does nothing those other four days in the afternoons, and bring them back to a five-day work week like everybody else, and reduce the amount of staff we would need because they'd be here the extra day? So that's my question.
Thanks, Sandy. Mike?
Government should work for us and work for the business owners in the town, and they need to help administer services and events that benefit the majority of our community. I am supportive of getting a fifth day if the financial, if the finances make sense, if it is a skeleton crew that works every Friday, but at least have someone in that office to have that be a point of contact.
That's not the question. The question is, do you believe that they should go back to a five-day work?
I do, I do support that if the finances make sense. Either if they flex, you know, if there's, half the staff works Monday through Thursday and half the staff works Tuesday through Friday, but having people in those offices, at least one representative from those departments in there, if there's, if, with the four tens and everything like that.
But if they have, they're off, and then they need more help, so we hire another whole person versus them coming in to gate the Ferrari and tell them that they're not person versus them coming in to gate the Ferrari and going, that they're not working. How does that make sense?
Mike, you can summarize.
Okay. I'm in, again, I'm in full support of getting accessibility and increasing a presence in our city hall and having someone there five days a week. I am supportive of that.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Yes, with all the construction in town and all the development and all that goes on and how hard the developers work and the fact that new development pays the income tax bill in this, in this town, yes, we need people to work five days a week. They need to be here on Fridays to answer the questions of the contractors. You know, most of our funding comes from property taxes and most of that comes from people tearing down homes and building a new one or selling their house and the new buyer comes in because all the property taxes are baked into a much higher level. So we definitely need people here to help us to get this work done. And as far as city staff goes, yes, we hired a bunch of new city staff. And it was, I was the only one and I actually kind of threw a little bit of a fit about it because it was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of new payroll for this small town with nothing tied to it. There was not one thing that they said that they were going to do with that eight hundred and fifty K. Now, to my point, and I think to Sandy's point, is that some of that money could have been used to retain the two police officers that we lost. I mean, that, that's what we need to do. We need to be flexible, we need to react in situations, we need to have people here working so that the contractors can get their jobs done and because that pays the city's bill. Our property taxes pay most of the bill, along with the other taxes too, but the bulk of it comes from property taxes. So we need to keep those departments open. And all of these people that we hired, additional environmental engineers, those things aren't necessarily coming back and benefiting the residents.
Can you summarize?
Yes. I want things that are visible and usable and add to the betterment of the lives of the living. It's not complicated. You can see it, you can use it, you can touch it and feel it, and it's make our city cleaner and better.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
It may not be complicated, but you have to understand it before you can offer an opinion on it. We have organizational challenges in our department, not the least of which is that we've had turnover in the public works director position. And a great deal of that burden has fallen on the city manager's office. That's why we've added an assistant city manager to our employee mix is because until we get our departments humming, where the directors of the departments and the staff can handle their jobs without putting undue stress on the city manager's office, we're going to need our best people in the city manager's office to make sure when decisions need to be made, that can't be made at the department level or jobs aren't getting done, that those jobs actually get done. We didn't add an environmental assistant, we didn't add any environmental staff. That's also a fallacy. We traded two environmental analysts and replaced them with an environmental programs manager. It's as simple as that. You can see that in the budget. Lastly, with respect to four days a week, our employees work forty hours. They work ten hours each of the four days that they're here. And we have staff available on Fridays and on the weekends for various things that are more acute needs than going to the planning desk and getting plans. Builders are able to work with the four-day work week. And here's what you need to understand in terms of our labor negotiations and what we pay our staff. The four-day work week is an important non-monetary incentive which allows us to attract and retain employees, good employees, without leading the market in terms of the monetary compensation we give them. Because right now with our current budget, we can't compete with Manhattan Beach or Beverly Hills or Santa Monica. So we have to provide them sensible solutions, sensible incentives to come here and stay here to work, which we've been able to do with a four-day work week. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Next audience question? Hi.
Hi there. Dave Davis. I'm one of the owners of Hermosa Brewing Company in downtown Hermosa Beach. One of, the first thing I'd like to say is, I find it aggravating to hear all businesses that serve alcohol lumped together. I mean, I read the ABC reports, I read the police reports, we know it's a handful of businesses that contribute to ninety percent of the troubles we have in downtown Hermosa and they're all, you know, they're all located on the pier. So as a mom and pop restaurant, it's, you know, it's not fair to classify all businesses that serve alcohol as part of the trouble in downtown. One of the other things, the parking study came back and said that it's a poor parking experience that we're having in Hermosa, not just more parking spaces. So part of that is a factor that we have, we are, we have parking that goes until two o'clock in the morning. Manhattan Beach cuts it off at nine o'clock, free parking after that. So we also, in Redondo, they have meters that allow people to pay for parking by their phone. So Hermosa is known as a city who loves to give parking tickets. That's a bad experience for anybody who comes to this city. I hear that every day as a business owner who's on the ground in downtown Hermosa, I hear people complaining about the parking experience in Hermosa. Not that they can't find parking, but that it's short-term and then the meters go all night and then, you know, they, sometimes they come back from a three-hour dinner and they have a parking ticket because we have parking officers, you know, if you're, if you're two minutes past your meter, they are ticketing you. So.
Do you have a question?
I do have a question. The, we were severely impacted as a small business in downtown Hermosa by the Teen Choice Awards. That, you know, we have, I'm part of the Downtown Business Association, there are thirty businesses reporting over two hundred thousand dollars in loss from those businesses in the week of that event. So when you talk about putting on these types of events, what are, what are we as citizens? I'm a citizen of Hermosa, I live in Hermosa. What are we getting and what are, you know, what is the benefit to us? You're putting on these events on the backs of the small businesses. You're not, you know, it's a cost. There is a cost. It's the cost to us. And so the city is made whole with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever they earn, but the rest of the money to put on that event came from the small businesses that lost the money. So I guess my question is, small businesses, there's not a single councilman that runs a small business in Hermosa. So my concern is, is there anyone here that is going to stand up for small businesses and say, "It's not a good idea to put on these events unless the businesses are made whole" or, you know, there's, we have to look at these scenarios in a different way. So my question to you is, next year, when the, if you're on the sitting on the city council, are you going to approve something like the Teen Choice Awards, which has very little benefit to the city and a lot, does a lot of damage to the small businesses?
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Trent?
Well, as a salesman who's been calling on Los Angeles for thirty years, I live day-to-day in sales. For thirty years, I've been in the pitfire sales and I've risen to the top of my industry in terms of customers and volume. And so I am very sympathetic to businesses. I understand that you have daily, have to ring that cash register and that you're responsible for payroll and maintaining everything that you have to do. So all of these rules and regulations that we lump on businesses are something I would not support, even, even like a single-use plastic, so it's going to force you to change all your equipment and a lot of your products and things like that. I'm not in favor of that. What I am in favor of is things like the Fiesta that the businesses like, that brings a lot of people downtown, a lot of people to come in and have a beer at your establishment. Regarding the Teen Choice Awards, I am very, I'm biased against it now. I mean, when I first heard about it, I was a little bit starstruck myself, thought, oh, this is so cute. And some of the messaging was quite well. Taylor Swift and the Jonas Brothers talked about getting, no one gets out unscathed and to stay true to yourself. And I have a teenager and they certainly need to hear that. But it was really not well-designed or planned and it really disrupted the small businesses. And most people don't know that every day counts in business. I certainly do. I have a quota every day. I have a fifty thousand dollar quota basically every day. And so I know that it can really affect you. So I would be, I would not be in favor of it if it's going to do that. It's going to disrupt it. I want things that, where you guys want it too, like the Fiesta.
Can you summarize?
Yeah.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
All right. Thanks for the question. Regarding the meters, we replaced a bunch with credit card meters, but they're not app-enabled, which is what you're talking about. Somebody who wants to stay an extra hour, have another beer can add time. We just were talking about whether we have the guts in our existing parking meters to integrate them with an app. So if they, if we do, then that's an easier fix and if we don't, it'd have to replace all the hardware. But that's certainly something on our mind because we want parking to be as easy as possible. And with respect to Teen Choice, the two questions I asked to Bain Productions when we had the study session, which was the third meeting we had with the, with the local businesses, was basically, if we considered it again, could it go through the normal process, which would run it through the Parks and Recreation Commission and then council so that we could have time to get the input of the businesses? The way it was proposed to us, when it came to us, is the network wanted it confidential and approved by the staff. And our understanding was, there was a local business owner who was co-producing the event and would be able to sort of watch out for their footprint in terms of time and space and how much it took up. For whatever reason, it became what it became and the footprint was problematic. Whether that's first-year wrinkles that are ironed out like we had when AVP came back, back in twenty sixteen, or whether that's something that's just incompatible with benefiting our business community is a question that we would have to answer through the normal process.
Can you summarize?
And the last question I asked him was, based upon what I heard from some of the businesses, was, could you have it outside of the summer season? Because we have a lot of foot traffic coming down and we need parking. Could you do it in November? Could you do it in April? Could you do it sometime when it would be a shot in the arm to businesses to bring ten thousand screaming kids down to Hermosa Beach and their parents to hopefully patronize our businesses? So we heard that. If we consider it again, I expect it will run through the normal process and we'll make sure that we take a hard look at where it would fit in the calendar.
Sure. Okay. Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Thank you very much for the question. Thank you for deciding to open it for business in Hermosa Beach. Hopefully, it's not a regrettable decision and we can make your life a little bit better moving forward. I've enjoyed sitting down with the Downtown Business Association, a few members, and hearing some of their issues, especially about the Teen Choice Award. I'm not in favor of the way that it was planned at all. There was a plan in secret, there was minimal discussion, staff approved it and it hurt our businesses greatly. That's not something that we can bring upon our community again. I must have talked to a few different business owners than Mr. Larson did because as far as the Fiesta, I, I don't know how your numbers are, but I heard a lot of the retailers are hurt by Fiesta Hermosa happening both weekends. I hope your business is immune from that and.
We agree, right, so there's service, entertainment and retail. So they all, they all like different things.
But then, you know, hopefully moving forward, you know, with the live music and, you know, open mic night and things like that, the short-term entertainment permits and things like that, working forward, that that will benefit your business, something I'm very supportive of. I know that you're not on Pier Avenue, but open up some live music venues. I think live music brings the right type of crowd that we need to attract to town, not necessarily some more DJs. So again, thank you for having your business in town and thank you for the question.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Dave. Any more questions?
Could you take one more for me?
Well, it's almost always, yeah, yeah, one person. Okay, that's it. So we'll try to buzz through the final questions here pretty quickly.
I'm up with one more question, are you, Adam? If you're okay with it.
I guess, Trent, you're okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it.
Sorry to keep you one minute longer.
Concise.
You know, unfortunately, these days, we are country and it trickles down, that we're kind of in a divisive conversation here, if you will. And I know Trent and Justin, you've been subject to this and you're aware of it, you know, especially on social media, it can get pretty ugly. And it can, what starts on social media, I think, can emanate, you know, when you see that person on the street that you just got personally attacked from or, you know, it goes beyond social media because we're such a small community. So I'm wondering if you have any, any ideas on what we can do as a community to come together and bridge some of that divisiveness and not only to make it a better place for all of us to live, but to set an example for our kids?
Thanks, Adam. That'd be for Justin.
I think that's a terrific question and it's elevate the conversation. So for example, Trent and I disagree on a ton of stuff, as you've heard tonight, and sometimes those disagreements are sharp. But Trent's a friend of mine, Mike's a friend of mine. I haven't seen Trent badmouth somebody on social media, I don't think ever. And if I have, it's been an isolated incident and I can't say that for everybody else on social media. And that's the approach I try to take as well, not just because I'm an elected official, but because I'm an adult and I'm a member of this community. And so elevating the conversation is always what I try to do. And that is, stick to the issue, not to the person. And if you do that, and if you let the slings and arrows wash off your back and you focus on the issue, you elevate the conversation. Eventually, the other person who might be launching personal attacks at you, eventually has to come back to the issue and talk about the issue. And when you do that, you lead the way to a more constructive conversation. That's how we do it.
Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Just to build upon that point, I have to agree with Justin. I haven't seen any personal attacks from the three of us on social media. From some of our supporters, there are some, and I, if anyone supports me, I try to shut them down immediately. Getting off of social media is probably the best way to have those conversations. Going to a audio tour of the town, going out for a drink afterwards, you know, doing something social, and when you're sitting face-to-face with someone, you're not going to say what you write as a keyboard warrior. I think that we all need to have our personal accountability of our each individual supporters and when there's individuals who have never even spoken or met me, who are attacking me on social media, that if there's an individual who's a supporter, they need to shut it down. I'm more than open to any conversations and I hope as an elected official that I'll emulate that to our youth. I know that our schools are doing great jobs with discussing mental health. It's something as a firefighter in the fire service and public service that we are very passionate about right now because we are losing more first responders to suicide than, you know, in the line of duty. So mental health is a big thing in the fire service and police service and society as a whole. And I think getting off our devices, logging off the computer and actually talking in person to the parks and down on Upper and Lower Pier Avenue and Hermosa Ave, all over town, would be beneficial.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
So I'm pretty active on social media. I do a lot of posting and I try to be very educational. Over the past seven years, I've immersed myself in book reading, like over four hundred brand-new books. And what I try to do is share that knowledge with the people in the community. And I've written a lot of reviews and I share information and I try to let people know who I am. I don't think there's anybody that's let them, you know, explained themselves more than me on social media about who I am, how I think and how I would vote. And I've been active down here in this council chambers for five years now. So people should have a pretty good idea of who they're electing when they're electing Trent Larson. And I have always been a person who has been able to get people together and to play somewhat nice with each other. You know, I put myself through college playing football. I started sports at a very young age and I played center, all right? So I was the center of the line. I had to get the other linemen together with me, you know, form the huddle, be as a team. And I don't, I don't throw many darts. Occasionally, I do if it's really pointed and it's issue-specific. But as Justin said, I'm not badmouthing people on social media, but I have experienced some of it myself and I think it's easy for people, and the CIA has done studies on this, when you're behind a keyboard and you're not face-to-face with somebody and you're not looking at them, it's very easy for some people to be snarky.
Can you summarize?
Yes. So I am elevating the conversation to the best of my ability. I write long things on social media that are somewhat wordy and people have a hard time following me sometimes, but believe me, I'm being very specific, straight to the point, and if you take the time, you'll learn from the things that I write.
Thanks, Trent. Okay. I think that's the last question. Any more? Okay. We have a history of taking all audience questions as much as possible and it's great that we're able to do that. I think we can go through the next set of questions relatively quickly. And Dave, this question has to do, I don't know if you looked on the internet, but anyway, if you want to know the next set of questions, they're right here on this page. It says a 2019 debate question. So this question is an alcohol question, but it has, it has to do with crime and impacts and that kind of stuff, but the question is, how many more alcohol outlets should be added? So I will refer to, real quickly, a Los Angeles, Los Angeles report and it's called Reducing Alcohol Harms in Los Angeles County. A couple of the points in the, in the report, which was done by the LA County Public Health Department, communities with high, high density restaurants, bars, stores, selling alcohol are much more likely to have increased rates of violent crime. And Hermosa Beach had, has four times the on-premises alcohol outlet density compared to all of Los Angeles County. So that's, on-premises is a restaurant or a bar or nightclub where you would consume the alcohol on-site. And one more point and we'll go to the question. Hermosa Beach had the fourth highest, so in this study, they ranked all the cities in Los Angeles County and the city of Los Angeles was broken up into their electoral districts. So there was a hundred and seventeen of these cities and communities in this report. Hermosa Beach had the fourth highest alcohol outlet density in LA County. Okay. Debate question seven, and then this will be for, let's see, this will be for Mike. Do you agree with the findings and the recommendations in the reduced, in reducing the alcohol-related harms of Los Angeles County report regarding the relationship of alcohol density to increase violent crime in a city? How many new late-night alcohol, on-sale alcohol outlets, which are restaurants or bars or nightclubs, that close after ten PM should be added in Hermosa Beach? And that would be for Mike.
Sure. I'll answer the second part first, is none. We do need to make our Pier Plaza a family-friendly place and we have had, made great progress over the years. Currently, the municipal code does limit how many places can serve liquor after ten eight, ten PM. We have these laws in place to prevent the expansion of venues selling liquor. I know the stats look a little bit weird probably with their density, but I mean, we are just under one and a half square miles, so we may have the same number of bars and restaurants as a certain city, but we're, as a whole, we're just a small city. I did spend my early years watching Sunday football at the bars. I respect the business models that depend on those clientele, but we have to make sure that those clientele also respect our town. I think we need to continue our public, improve our public safety and guarantee a family-friendly environment. I think a lot of those infrastructure design things have helped out a lot with increased lighting on the pier, increased, increased police presence. And I have to agree with you, Dave, that not all liquor establishments are equal. There are very respectful, family-friendly places that serve beer and wine, and that aren't attracting a crowd that stays out till 2:00 a.m. that doesn't respect our town. So that is it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
You know, Hermosa Beach has long been a magnet for the young and the restless to come and visit our town, and there's a lot of people that come here and fall in love, get married, have a family, and move back to Hermosa, and never leave. And that's part of our experience down at the bars. And on occasion, yes, people drink too much, and it's rowdy and sloppy, and the bars need to police that, they do, and the lighting on the pier helps, and increased police presence down late at night, parking a cruiser on the pier helps. But, you know, it is something that our, our town has had this in place for a long time, and the restaurant owners are very aware of it, and I think that they've done a much better job as of recent in making sure that they maintain their premises and their crowds, and they've hired private security. So I don't want to take the fun out of Hermosa. I too enjoyed it when I was a young man and met my wife of 27 years down in the bars of Hermosa, and I believe the same thing's going on. When I go down there and look, which is not too often late at night, I see the same kind of thing going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
Thank you, and I want to briefly respond to Dave's point at the beginning. In this format, it's very difficult for us to distinguish between the different types of alcohol-serving establishments, but there's no question they're not all created equal. And the way that plays out is, we worked with the establishments that our PD knows are a source of a great deal of the problems we have, to get them to agree to eliminate buy-one-get-one-free-drink specials, and to make sure that their promotions are food and beverage, not just beverage, so that they promote lifestyle, and that they don't require somebody to buy multiple drinks in order to enjoy the discount. So contrast that with how we handled the businesses on Hermosa Avenue that were having code enforcement issues with open mic and trivia night and stuff like that. We developed a limited live entertainment permit to facilitate your ability to bring people in to have a good time, especially during the weekdays. And so there's a difference in how we treat them, even though we might not be able to get into the sort of nitty-gritty about how we distinguish some from the others as we sit up here. But in any event, in response to the question, obviously, there is a relationship between alcohol outlet density and increased violent crime anywhere. It doesn't require a whole lot of research to draw that conclusion, anecdotal or otherwise. And as far as how many new late-night on-sale alcohol outlets, the answer is clearly none. We set a moratorium a while back. We're over that level, so we haven't yet retired alcohol-serving establishments to get to the moratorium. Until we do that, I don't see any need to revisit the discussion.
Okay, great. Thanks, Justin. Okay, next question is, kind of relates to this discussion, whatever, and it has to do with how big of a problem is the alcohol-related crime in the downtown area? And within the alcohol outlet study, they ranked Hermosa Beach in this reducing alcohol-related harms, which by the way, is available on the website, you can click on it. Anyway, so they, they looked at 117 communities in all of LA County, and then if you took just the South Bay cities that border the ocean, so those cities would start with Manhattan Beach, El Segundo, Redondo, and work its way down to Palos Verdes. Within just the, the South Bay cities that border the ocean, Hermosa Beach was ranked number one in violent crime. And then after that study is, I've looked at the Hermosa Beach violent crime rates for rape and aggravated assaults, and for, pretty much since 2011 all the way up to 2016, for rape compared to Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach has twice, more than twice, the amount of rape on a per capita basis than the city of Manhattan Beach. And on, for aggravated assault, also from that period of 2011 and 2016, almost double the amount of aggravated assaults occur in Hermosa Beach than Manhattan Beach. Anyway, how significant of a problem is alcohol-related crime after midnight? Do the positive impacts outweigh the negative impacts of alcohol sales after midnight in Hermosa Beach? Do you ever see alcohol sales after midnight as a big moneymaker? And I would preface that, I forgot to throw in one little background thing. The city of Hermosa Beach did a draft analysis of how much money the city makes, so income for the downtown area and the amount expended. And basically, in the, in the report, they said for all alcohol outlet, or all the downtown area, there was about a $300,000 profit, and for late-night alcohol, so these are establishments, after midnight, they saw a loss of income of 300,000 on that particular thing. So anyway, so how significant of a problem is alcohol-related crime, and do the positive impacts outweigh the negative impacts of alcohol sales after midnight? Do you ever see alcohol sales after midnight as a big moneymaker for the city of Hermosa Beach? Trent?
I don't want to get into the business of comparing Hermosa Beach to other cities. I want to compare Hermosa Beach to Hermosa Beach. Is it getting better, or is it not? And we have a long tradition of having establishments that serve alcohol on the pier, and people come from all around the area to come to Hermosa Beach to go down on the pier and have fun. Like I said, it attracts the young and the restless. And so we need to do a better job at late at night, and that's why we need to fund the police department. And when we lose two officers because we won't pay them $30,000 more when we spent 850K on other payrolls, then I think we have a problem. I think we need to fund the police department more. Cracking down on the bars, you know, they need to follow the rules, right? They have rules they have to follow, their permits come with rules, and they need to follow those rules. And if there's unruly people that do unruly things, they need to be arrested and locked up, so that the word gets out. You can't come down to Hermosa and do that. But I'm not about stifling the fun, or the reason that people come here, and I do believe that Hermosa Beach creates a lot of relationships, and a lot of people come here when they're young, and they want to be at the beach life and the beach lifestyle, and they, they think nothing wrong of going into the bars and having fun. It does become a problem late night sometimes, I will admit that, and we need, the lighting down there is better, we need more policing, and we need to fully fund the police department and code enforcement so that we can maintain and improve our stats. But I don't want to compare ourselves to other cities because the numbers just, they're too small, the sample size.
Thanks, Trent. Justin?
All right, thank you. Our focus has been, and I'm a member of the downtown subcommittee with the mayor, our focus has been on making sure everybody who comes down to Hermosa Beach gets home safely, whether you're a resident or a visitor. It's as simple as that, because that's good for business, and that's good for the community, and that's good for all of our visitors. And we reviewed where we were in November 2018. This was a year after we had three officers injured in a melee that erupted out of Patrick Malloy's, and the police chief and the beach reporter said, as he was quoted, "It's a completely different atmosphere in our downtown Pier Plaza than it was five or 10 years ago." And that's a result of the work that we've done to improve lighting, to improve cleanliness, to work in partnership with the establishments down there, as I just mentioned, to eliminate some of the promotions and some of the business attributes that were causing people to drink to excess, or encouraging them to do so, and drawing a crowd that wasn't productive for their business, their neighboring businesses, or the community. And we increased enforcement. As I said at the top of the hour, we allowed the police department to create a downtown unit by getting them fully staffed. It's a marketplace. We have police officers making lateral moves to other cities, and we've had that, so we're not at full staffing as we sit here today. But you can't just throw money at the problem. It's not as simple as that. You have to look at the market, what the compensation is for police officers, what we can afford with respect to not only that bargaining unit in the city, but all of our other bargaining units in the city, and make sure that you're doing what you can to optimize our enforcement resources and our enforcement capability. But we brought in, in addition to optimizing our police department and its focus on downtown, we brought in the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission to help us make sure that we got rid of some of the worst practices that were attracting the wrong crowd and encouraging the wrong type of behavior, and as a result, downtown is safer than it was five or 10 years ago. It is family-friendly, and we're going to continue to focus on that, to make sure it continues to be, and that we improve it, to make sure that it's a place for people of all ages. Thank you, Al.
Yep. Thanks, Justin. Mike?
So right now, we do have the restriction on alcohol sales, and they, we have been successful in helping manage the situation. We have a limited number of businesses who sell alcohol, and I don't think we need to reduce their sales. With the right leadership, I think we can continue to improve the Pier Plaza safety. The concerning thing about those numbers with the rape and assaults is historically sexually, sex crimes and everything like that are under-reported. So I think there are a lot more young individuals who are either getting roofied or getting sexually assaulted than the stats truly warrant, and as a father to a daughter who will probably go out and go out in Hermosa Beach, that is a concerning thing. We need to make sure that the police, just to clarify, they are fully budgeted, theirs aren't fully staffed. But we need to make sure that contract with the meet-and-confer, that they are competitive with our neighboring cities. Right now, they're about 29 police officers, they need to get to about 38 to be fully staffed. But we also need to make sure that the camera systems are improved down there, so if there is any bad players, you're able to track the cars that they go to. We need to have license plate readers on the park, in the parking lots, so you can see where those individuals got in, you can get their license plate number when they leave, and then we can track them down and hold them accountable for any actions that they performed in our city. So getting the staffing, getting the equipment, we can make Pier Avenue as family-friendly as possible and not limit the sales of the alcohol at our businesses.
Okay, great. So we'll go on to the next debate question, and kind of the same topic, and also relates directly here Hermosa Beach to Manhattan Beach. And basically, I've already gone over the aggravated assault and rape numbers, and these numbers have generally tend to go up and down, but for the past almost two decades, the Hermosa Beaches have consistently had higher rate and higher aggravated assault numbers. Now, it turns out that the last two years, 2017 and 2018, those numbers dropped, but the, the numbers for 2019, this particular year, they're marching back up again. So let me ask the question. Numerous crime research studies have Hermosa Beach ranked as having higher rates of violent crime than other comparable California cities listed in these research reports. In particular, Hermosa Beach has, appears to have a history of higher rates, of higher rates of crimes for violent crimes of Part I rape and Part I aggravated assault compared to Manhattan Beach. Yet both Hermosa and Manhattan are ranked to have similar high-density of alcohol outlets, so we've got similar alcohol density in each city, but we have different, different numbers when it comes to rape and aggravated assault. To what do you attribute the history of higher rates for rape and aggravated assault in Hermosa Beach when compared directly to Manhattan Beach? Justin?
I'm not sure if the data is in fact consistent with the premise of the question, but let me just point out that what you focus on in looking at a problem like this are the long-term trends, and so as you pointed out, the trend is for 2017 and 2018 going down. We haven't seen the final numbers for 2019. There are a number of ways to look at that. One is, we are documenting more of the crime that happens in the city. That's one thing we've worked with our police on, because we want to make sure that we know who the knuckleheads are, and so we can identify them when they cause problems and weed them out of the city. So that may be in part what is happening in the data that you mentioned from 2019. There are any number of ways to look at the problem. The police chief recently retired, and in her retirement, she pointed out that a website called BackgroundChecks.org ranked Hermosa Beach as the eighth safest city in California. So you can look at the data in a number of different ways. That being said, we do have unique enforcement challenges in Hermosa Beach, and there is a relationship between the density of alcohol-serving outlets that we have and the crime that we see. You talk to any police officer, they'll tell you that. You talk to the command staff, they'll tell you that. That could be a legacy of a different patron profile that's been decades in the making in Hermosa Beach. We attract a younger demographic than, for example, Manhattan Beach does, generally speaking. It could be a lot of things, but we are focused on safety. We have seen improvement in it, both anecdotally and in the data, and that's a result of not just crime prevention through environmental design, but enforcement focus in giving our police department the tools that they need to get the job done and be out on the streets stopping crime. Thank you, Al.
Great. Thanks, Justin. Mike?
Perfect. Public safety is my number-one issue that I'm running on. To fully address this issue, we need to ensure that we have the proper statistics to see the full impact of any crime rates. As I said, historically, any rape, assault, aggravated assault issues are some, are historically under-reported, so making sure that we have the good, good stats and good data, that way we know where to allocate our police and other resources to guarantee the safety of our community. We can determine crime through the environmental design or infrastructure design, such as increasing the lighting, and it worked on Pier, but we also need to think of the alleyways and the parking lots as well. People are behaving themselves on Pier Plaza, but then they can go to the alleyway, go to a parking lot just, just north of the pier, and they can get into trouble up there. So as your council member, I'll allocate more resources to help better understand the data, and I'll use my education experience as a firefighter to help make sure Hermosa Beach is a state of, has state-of-the-art public safety.
Thanks, Mike. Trent?
Yes, you know, Hermosa Beach attracts a younger vibe than our neighboring cities, and that's been the case for, since I've been here, which is a long time. And so, you know, maybe that's part of the problem. And we do need to fully fund the police officers so that they can be there downtown late at night. That's when most of the problems occur, and the people who do cause the problems need to be dealt with. I know that right now, a lot of times, people do stuff and they get away with it, and that's a lot of the complaints that I see on social media and elsewhere, that nothing happens when people do bad things. And so I would say that we need to stop that practice. We need to enforce public drunkenness and other violations, and make sure that we send the right message so that this doesn't happen. I know the bar owners that I've spoke to, they, they want to be good stewards of the pier. They want to do the right thing. They have a business, they have customers, they have to meet payroll, et cetera. So, and they don't want hassle from the city in terms of all these code enforcements and coming down on them. So they've hired private security to help out, the new lighting's helped out, putting a cruiser on the pier's helped out, and the cameras down there have helped out, because now people, if they do do something, they know they're going to get caught, or at least they're going to be identified. So that's helped a lot, and maybe that's why you see the trend going down. But I don't want to take the fun out of Hermosa, but I do want to, you know, punish the people who do bad things, and I don't want them to go unpunished if they do. And so that would be, that's it.
Thanks, Trent. Okay, so on to the next question, and it kind of has to do with the downtown or the city in general, but not violent crime. The city commissioned a ICMA police operations report for the Hermosa Beach Police Department, and basically, some of the points in it were, all stakeholders agree that the single biggest challenge facing the city is alcohol-related issues generated by the Pier Plaza bars. Also, the Hermosa Beach Police Department handles a lot of, number of disturbance calls, calls for service, undoubtedly originating from the downtown area. And one of their recommendations, this ICMA, which is a group of retired police officers and police experts, they said empanel a calls-for-service committee in order to evaluate the calls-for-service demands. So this is not just for violent crimes, this is for disturbances in general. Question number 10. Do you agree with these quotes from the ICMA report? It's clear a large number of, a large number of calls for service are related to disturbances. Properly dealing with disturbances requires long-term problem-solving and resources. You agree that the ICMA report recommendation to empanel a call-for-service committee that includes all principal stakeholders, including representatives from all ranks of the department along with community members? As a newly-elected city council member, would you want to expand the downtown enhancement plan to empanel a calls-for-service committee that includes all stakeholders, representatives from all parts of the department, and community members? What steps would you take to establish such a committee? And that would be for Mike?
Sure. Thank you. I don't think we need to create a new calls-for-service committee. We already have the complete, Community Police Advisory Board, and we could change the scope to increase, to include the calls-for-service review. That advisory board's already made up of community stakeholders, residents, business owners. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel when we already have a group of engaged individuals that already care deeply about reviewing the police department. I do, I'm a big believer in stats, I think it's a finance background, but we need to make sure we have good statistics to improve Hermosa Beach. We can't manage what we can't measure. And I fully am supportive of expanding the scope for the Community Police Advisory Board to go over our calls of service, and I know that, you know, I talked to a few different police officers, they do respond to a lot of disturbance calls, and some of them are the loud waves crashing at night, and they do it with utmost respect, and, you know, with a smile in the middle of the night. of the night and take care of our residents. They perform welfare checks over the holidays, making sure that everyone's home safe when they're, when everyone's away for the holidays. So, I have to definitely thank our police department for everything they do. It's two different towns. It's Pier Plaza, you know, after midnight, and there's also the community 365. So, I think our police department does an outstanding job, and we need to definitely reward them.
Great. Mike, thanks. Trent?
Well, like we did with the Fourth of July parties that we've had for a long, long time, they used to be a lot more out of control than they are now. And how did we rectify that? We brought in more police. We warned the citizens. We said, "If you're going to be doing this, you have to keep it within your confines of your property, and you can't be all over the place," et cetera, et cetera. And it really toned things down. As far as toning down the late-night issues, there's certain things that happen, right? It's alcohol-related, and it's usually late at night, and we need to enforce our codes. So, that's going to mean some of the people are going to get arrested for staggering down the street drunk and, you know, relieving themselves in somebody's property, which is the kind of stuff you get that drives people crazy in the downtown area. Those people, we need to have the courage to send some of those people into the jail for the night and then fine them. And if you do that a few times, it's like speeding tickets or stopping at stop signs, et cetera, the word will get out and it will reduce even more. But that's where I'm at. We need to enforce the codes that we have on the books. I don't want to dampen down the fun at Hermosa, because that's throwing a net at everybody, but the bad actors, they need to be punished, in a fair way.
Great. Trent, thanks. Justin?
Again, it's a matter of resources in many respects, so when you're dealing downtown on a weekend or holiday evening after midnight, and you have to, as a law enforcement professional, figure out whether or not you have the resources to arrest somebody for drunken public, or whether you have to make sure you're down there because an assault might happen and you need to intervene and arrest somebody for that. So, it's ultimately a matter of resources and judgment, because anytime you book somebody and arrest them and book them into jail, it takes that officer and potentially a couple of officers away from downtown for an hour plus to get that person into jail through the booking process. And that means that they're not downtown keeping everybody safe. So, it's a judgment call that our law enforcement professionals do. I think they generally do a terrific job of making those judgment calls. Every time they're called upon to keep the community safe, they deliver. Just the other day, we had a burglary in progress on east of PCH, and they were there in a matter of seconds. And that is a testament to how prepared they are, how ready they are, and how skilled they are at making the kind of judgment calls that we're talking about here. Undoubtedly, downtown generates a higher number of calls of service, calls for service than any place else in town. That's been reflected in data upon data. That's exactly why the mayor and I have focused on downtown, focused our police resources, focused on preventing crime through environmental design, and focused on working with the establishments down there to curb some of the excesses that we've seen, and bringing in additional resources like ABC to make sure that those excesses go away. And we see the results. We need to continue to do that and stay on top of that. As far as impaneling a Call for Service Committee, I have a long working relationship with the police chief through that committee and through my work as a council member, and if the police chief said that a Calls for Service Committee was going to add value to our enforcement strategy, then I would fully support it. But it's not something that, as a non-law enforcement professional, I would require them to do without any input from our police chief.
Great. Justin, thanks. Okay, we're coming up to the last debate question, then there'll be closing statements after that. And it turns out, on the, just the format that we talked about at the beginning, it turns out that Trent is going to be answering debate question 11 here, the last one. Mike, you're going to be finishing that question, and then you're going to be doing closing statements immediately. So, that's just the way that, and the reason for that was, is that Trent started with closing statements, opening statements, and then it was agreed that Mike would start closing statements. So, it just kind of worked out that way. All right, this is a quick question, because we had somebody previously asked that. Mr. Jeff Hirsch was pretty much asked this question. So, real quickly, on debate question 11, do you agree with the California Vehicle Code 22500? It states that it's illegal for a vehicle to block access to a sidewalk. And then, I have a quote here from the city of Hermosa Beach, and it has to do with the notice of upcoming construction on 8th Street. And I'll read it. During the project, this is 8th Street, "During the project construction and at all times following the completion of the project, residents must make arrangements to ensure vehicles or equipment are not parked across or hanging across over a sidewalk." I'll just get, and then, okay, the next point would be, would you support a city program that ensures safe routes to school, that all residents must make arrangements to ensure that vehicles or equipment are not parked across sidewalks or hanging over the sidewalk, just like 8th Street? And the last part is, should safe routes to school sidewalks be available for all Hermosa Beach residents to use without parked cars on them at any time of day, 365 days a year, just like 8th Street? And that would be for Trent.
Yeah, you can't park on the sidewalk. You can't block it. It's a simple thing. You can't block the sidewalk with your car. So, the answer to the whole thing is yes. And if they are blocking the sidewalk, that's a reasonable ticket to get, right? Earlier, we talked about tickets, and I think a lot of times, we're a little ticket-happy in this town. The numbers are staggering, the amount of parking tickets that we write. And it's a real problem for some of the business people, especially when they're having dinner and they're watching the football game, and they come out and they got a ticket on their car. That's a problem. But it's not a problem if you're parking across the sidewalk on a safe route to school. You're going to get a ticket. You can't do it. You can't do it. It's that simple. And safe routes to school, I think 8th Street is looking beautiful. I've always been in favor of 8th Street. I spoke to the council many times about it. I said, "Go ahead and do it. You know, be brave. Take that step. Do it, do it, do it." And they did it, and look what's happening. It's better. Now, some people do complain about it, because they can't park their car where they used to, which was an illegal spot anyway. But they'll get over it. They'll find a place to park, and, you know, it was never their spot anyway. So, you can't park across the sidewalk. Period.
Thanks, Trent. Those are very definitive. Justin?
I agree. You can park your car on your property. You can park it on the street. Even you can block your driveway if you have a single-family residence. You just have to come down to City Hall to get a nominally-priced permit that's good forever. The one place you can't park is on the sidewalk. Now, that being said, there's a culture that's built up in the city over a long period of time, and part of it's because of the physical state of our sidewalks that are impassable because people's planters are on them, or they have rain diversion infrastructure, whatever the case may be. And so, folks have gotten into the habit of parking across the sidewalk. And so, what I think we need to do, as I mentioned earlier, is a phased approach, where we take a look, now that we've got 8th Street as a catalyst, at all of our safe routes to school, evaluate the physical obstacles to using those sidewalks for pedestrian passage, correct those physical impediments by ordering the residents to remove encroachments and make them pedestrian-friendly, and perhaps helping with some funding for those types of projects, the same way we did on 8th Street, and then doing what we did on 8th Street, which is making sure our expectations are clear, that once we're done spending money fixing your street and making it pedestrian-friendly, you're not going to be able to park on the sidewalk. We're willing to help you any way we can. Have a community garage sale to clear out your garage, help you do bulk pickup to clear out your garage, help you sell the extra car that you don't need that's taking up space on the street. Whatever it takes, we're going to help you, but we want the end result to be all of our safe routes to school are passable for folks like Jeff, for our little kids, for our seniors, and for everybody in the community. Thanks, Al.
Great, Justin, thanks. You'll help me sell my 200 t-shirts my wife must be. You're incredible.
I don't know about that, but I'll drive them up to the thrift store on Aviation.
Okay, Mike?
So, I think we're all in consensus here. The answer is yes, yes, and yes. We can't just stop at the safe routes to school. We've got to look at all of our sidewalks, and to stop that habit of our residents parking on sidewalks, we should do a phased-in approach of an education. Throw a flyer on their windshield, say, "We're going to start ticketing and holding you accountable for parking your car on the sidewalk. It's against Vehicle Code, California Vehicle Code 22500." That way, we're not coming out and slapping tickets on everyone right away. We're taking, you know, we're just holding our residents accountable, and then, two weeks later, we can go back, and if they're still there, then we can start the enforcement process. But, you know, starting an enforcement process in something we've never enforced is kind of unfair. Goes back to the communication issues that we've had in the past. And I think educating the residents, making sure that they know. But again, going back to the question, we need to provide safe routes to school for our youngest members. We need to have safe routes for all of our residents, in a chair, in a stroller, whatever, using a walker. We already have. It's an old city. We have old sidewalks. We need to improve them. We need to constantly look in how we can increase accessibility for everyone. As a council member, I'll encourage enforcement for those cars or trashcans that block the public right of way on sidewalks, and we need to keep our community safe and accessible for everyone.
Great, Mike, thanks. Okay.
Can I address that question, please?
What do you guys think?
After. After.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Mike, I'm giving you five seconds here. Like I mentioned before, Mike just answered the question, but, you know, we had Trent do opening statements, and then we reverse it. So, Mike, you're going to do a closing statement, and two minutes for that.
Perfect. Thank you for all those who hung in there all three hours later and stayed with us tonight. Thank you for all those who are re-watching or watching at home right now. Thank you to Councilmember Massey and Mr. Larson for a great conversation, and to you, Mr. Benson, for a wonderfully moderated event this evening. It's been wonderful sharing my vision for our best little beach city, and I want to listen to your vision for the future. My focus for this campaign has been talking about public safety and quality of life issues. When I go to work at the fire station, I want to know that when I left my wife and daughter at home, they're in a safe community. Emergency preparedness is a passion of mine. That's why I serve as a city commissioner on EPAC. Every decision the city council needs to make needs to factor in our public safety. I will work to preserve our small-town character, unique aesthetic heritage of our neighborhoods, parks, and downtown area. I'll support our sense of community, and we need to encourage local events that promote our local businesses. I spend the majority of my days at home with my daughter walking around town, or at the park, or the library. I see the conditions of our city streets, sidewalks, and the fact that we need to increase our accessibility and safety for our whole community. Responsible fiscal management is also a priority of mine. With a degree in finance and master's of public administration, I have the knowledge basis and the experience to not just balance our city budget, but also increase our bond rating. Hermosa Beach is my home. I love this town. I want to make sure that we protect it, we protect the small-town character, our quality of life, and our vibrant local economy. Thanks again for your time this evening. I hope you learned, I hope I earned your vote. For more information, please visit www.michaledtoya.com, or like my Facebook page or Instagram, @dToya, the number four Hermosa. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Great job. Okay, Trent?
My experiences in life and in my professional job are different than any other member on the council. I've been in the private sector enterprise solution sales for 30 years, calling on the who's who of Los Angeles. So, I have a deep respect for how hard it is that we have to work to maintain our lives and live here in Hermosa Beach. For five consecutive years, I have been involved in city politics. I have run for office in 2015, 2016, 2017, and now 2019. You could say I'm fully immersed and enmeshed with the community and the issues and the different opinions and objectives that people have. So, I have, through this time, learned a great deal about what the residents want, what they don't want, what we could do, and what we can't do. And my vision for Hermosa Beach is to focus on things that are visible and usable and add to the betterment of the lives of the living. And truly, I have read about this in both fiction and in fact and in philosophy, and I will bring this to the table. I will be a voice of the taxpayer. I am a taxpayers' advocate on the council. I am going to be the protagonist, the one that argues in favor of you, the customer. I view the taxpayers and the voters as the customer, and you guys need to get your money worth. And we need to spend the money that we do collect, and no one gets price increases like the government. It's automatic. There is no one in the private sector that gets automatic price increases, but we do, the public. And if we don't spend that money and spend it back on the taxpayers, it goes to places and then just gets frittered away or used unproductively. And I can't bring up a better example than when we spent $850,000 this year on payroll, and we tied it to absolutely nothing. That will not happen when I'm a council member. We will get more bang for our buck, and we will see the town get cleaner, we'll see it get better, and we'll see these improvements put into place. And that's the promise I'm giving you. I'm also, I have more experience on this council in life than some of my opponents. I have been through a lot, calling on Los Angeles and the private sector, and I've learned to really appreciate where I am now, where I've come from, all that I've learned, all that I've become, and all that I've done. And I'm going to give that back to the community in the form of a very good, dedicated, responsible councilperson, and I would appreciate your vote very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Great job. Justin?
Thank you all. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Trent. Thank you, Mike. We're in great fiscal shape in the city. We have a balanced budget and a full rainy-day fund. We're a safer community than we were four years ago. We have shorter response times from our fire department and a safer downtown. We have a whole bunch of projects coming up, which are going to be important to the community. North School, which I've been integral to working with the district on, Skechers, the new firehouse that's under construction, and ultimately, the city yard. We're just getting started. Let's keep moving Hermosa forward. I ask for your vote. For more information, please click over to JustinForCouncil.com. Thank you all. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Justin. Great job tonight. So, I'll just announce really quickly, so all the members, the public and people watching